Board of Selectmen on Thursday, September 11th, 2025 at 6:06 PM. Meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, WCAT, on Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. And you all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all remain standing for a moment, we'd just like to have a moment of silence for the victims of 9/11. All right, thank you.
Nobody's trying to get in, right?
All right, we're having some technical difficulties this evening. All right, number one, a recap of the weekend storm that occurred on 9/6 and the town's response. All right, so we wanted to go over just what happened on Saturday, especially since we had a tornado siren go off, you know, reports of a funnel cloud and everything. So Jim or Adam, would you like to talk about it a little bit?
Good evening, emergency manager, Jim James McKee. So Saturday, we had a little, well, it's almost our second severe weather of the season so far. About 3 o'clock, we got called out for wind damage, first on Washington Street. So we had six tree incidents, three on power lines, and one car that a tree grazed. All these incidents happened between like 3:15 to 3:45, within a half an hour. One was Washington Street, one was Old West Brookfield Road and New Reed Street Gilbert Road. All the departments worked out great, between the fire, highway, the SERC team, police, National Grid, all the officers that came out, even a couple of them that were off duty, I believe, helped. Initially, about 3:15, this cell came through and it was just starting to form right around, from Belcher Town to where, to here. And the National Weather, I spoke with them, the National Weather Service didn't have, they have radar data, it's like squares, and when, if you ever see it on TV, there's two different colors when they come together. But they're, if they're the same color, white, it's just a, it's not a rotating, it's just like a
Oh, yeah, okay.
a straight line push. That usually happens when the storms fall apart. Or in this case, I guess the storm was gaining, it might have been breaking down, gaining, falling apart. And then as it was forming, it's shooting gusts of straight line wind around hills. So I believe one came down through Town Farm Road area, Cutler Road area, Old West Brookfield. Then one was going across through the center of town. Some people mistake these clouds too for, they're called the wall cloud. And the winds basically, because 5,000 feet up, the wind's moving clouds around, so these are little, they call them scud clouds. And they're kind of rotating spin and all of a sudden people might see a starting of a twister, it's really not, it's just the wind coming down. So the National Weather Service said during that timeframe, over us, it was probably about 50, 60 mile an hour winds, probably about 5,000 feet up, and that's why when you get those little push downs. And that can cause just as much damage too, in isolated areas, take out a neighborhood, a street, you know, power lines, what basically what happened here. So that's, and then once they got past here, to Holden and Sterling and Berlin, that's where those five tornadoes were formed. That's where they got much more of a
So they did actually have tornadoes there?
Yes, it basically was the starting here, and then they moved, as they moved on.
Okay.
So, but we didn't have the right, correct conditions for it. So, but the sirens did go off as, and it was good that people heard them and they started to, started to understand, to, you know, take cover when you hear them. Of course, the responders are going the other way, or heading into harm's way. But it was, everyone worked together, and the other thing with the siren at the police station, that has to be manually hit. Rutland and Regional, they can manually set off the one in West Warren by a tone. But the one in Warren has to be hit by an office, someone. Luckily, there was a police officer available, Officer Moran, which I thanked for him for doing that, because that was where the sighting was, the center of Warren, so. It's worth to do that, because if we didn't do that and something
Yeah.
did actually, another burst came down. It's, yeah, so.
So my question was, as I was in the basement
Yep.
Saturday afternoon, is how do you know when it's over?
So that's one thing that might have to be kind of looked at, I guess another message could get pushed out through our reverse 911, or I guess that would be the only way to really do that, because people could be sitting in their basement for hours.
Yeah.
As the sun comes out, or, you know.
So would the siren just turn off? Like, could it be the length of the siren, or is that not necessarily
The only thing you could keep doing, if it was an active tornado and it was, you know, still getting more reports, we could keep cycling it. The siren cycles for 10 blows, 10 whistles. Once you hit, you hit the button, whistles.
Oh, and it does 10 times?
10 cycles. After that, it's quiet, you know, you'd have to hit it again, and it'd go off 10 cycles again. So as if something was going, you could keep hitting it.
Okay. And I received at least two texts. Do you know where, I don't even know where these would have come from. One was directly to Warren Residence, "Tornado sighting, please seek shelter," and then another one was, "Urgent severe weather, remain indoors and avoid travel." But they just come from like a five-digit number?
I believe that's, that's the nine, reverse 911 system, right?
Is that, okay.
There's a couple ways that could happen, it could be Rutland or it could be the state itself, State of Massachusetts sending something else to FEMA or something as well.
Okay.
I also got some from Weather App.
Oh, yeah.
Weather App sent me
You might be getting, yeah, Weather Service, yeah.
Hey, seek shelter. And I actually got it quicker from the Weather App than I did.
Oh.
Because I came up like, what? And then Tammy was telling me about all these people posting on Facebook that they see a cloud.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where kind of I became aware of it.
There was, I want to come make it clear, there was no tornado, there was, you know, but there was some reports of sightings, but it never hit the ground, never, it was up in the atmosphere. It wasn't, it wasn't in Holden though. So there was tornadoes more east of us.
Yeah. All right, well, I think as long as people understand that if this stuff starts happening, you need to go downstairs or seek shelter.
You know, yeah, the other thing
In 2011, there were probably people who were outside watching the tornado come at them. I talked to one woman at the, girl at the time, who was playing with the hailstones.
Yeah.
You know, and she made it into her basement with like 30 seconds to spare, so, you know, you can't, it's not good.
Just get into a basement, get to lowest level away from a window.
Yeah, interior rooms right about
And if you happen, you know
Closet.
A car, under a car, any lowest point
Yeah.
if you can possibly get. And like I say, even like a 50 mile an hour wind gust might seem like 100, you know, it's bouncing off of things and, so.
That's true, yeah. Maybe we should look at getting a better alert system, siren or something? Because if you have to cycle it each time manually for Warren, and if somebody's not there or not able to get there, the message isn't going to go out.
Yeah, the other thing too is you've got the siren, but you've got people on the southeast side of town that would not even
I don't, I don't hear the siren.
So, so that's where the reverse 911, or the town alerts, or something like that has to come in play, but everyone doesn't have, you know, there might be that one or two house that doesn't have that they don't have the smartphone, they have the flip phone, they, you know.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe a better system, we could look into something like that, what it could offer, because maybe it's a tone and again, like Rutland can activate it for us
Yeah.
once they know, or, you know, one of you guys can hit the button, just like Town Alert. Hit the button on your cell phone and say, hey, there's a funnel cloud.
Send the tone.
Hit the button, and everybody gets the message and gets the alert. Because right now, it seems like more people are confused, because we sound it one Sunday a month, right? And nobody knows when it stops, you know, they just hear the siren go off and they're like, oh, should be clear. Siren's not going anymore, and they might walk right outside into it.
Yeah.
Because they're not hearing the siren anymore. Yeah, or if something happens and the guy can't get up to that button in the building,
That's, yeah.
God forbid, we all know the structural integrity of that building.
Yeah.
If, if that building
Yeah, it can compromise.
Gets compromised, and they can't get into it.
There's a lot of things too, if, like I said, the tornado was more in the center of town, if that took out the building, if it, you know, took out
It goes, it goes your warning.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Your cell towers, there's a lot of variables here. And that's when you bring your, could have to bring your resources from the outside and assist from other towns and, but.
I'm just trying to look for costs of this siren, because if it's something that people are going to listen to it, and if it's something in West Warren, it doesn't matter if they sound over here.
Yeah, it's the same problem, they only go so, the sound.
Yeah, and, you know, in a windstorm, you know, you don't hear it, roaring wind, you're not going to hear it, so.
Well, at the same time, it's common sense, if it's nasty outside, just shelter.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
And the other thing too is like, they didn't have an active tornado warning out. That's why the National Weather Service issued a tornado warning for Worcester County.
Question, thank you.
That would be an automatic, okay, we're going to blow the sirens.
Right.
But this was an actual sighting, possible tornado.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Jim, but, but at least something that we can control, even if we only have one, okay, that's the one we have. But we could control remotely, instead of physically having a guy go and click it, it would be ideal.
Yeah, I don't know if there was some way possibly of putting something on like the repeater towers, I don't know, those are the highest hills. You know, you'd have to
The guard siren systems, the reasoning behind it was two-fold, it was, you know, obviously they were designed to cover the downtown areas in each, each location. So anyone outside, working in businesses, shopping, whatever, could hear that alert. Obviously, they're not going to cover the outskirts of the town, ideally, we'd love to do that, but they were designed specifically for the center of town. They were also the original notification for the fire services, before we had radios and pagers and everything. The majority of firefighters that were on the fire department worked at the pump shop and were rights. So those alerts were meant to alert them that they needed to go to the station for a call. So that was where the two uses of those sirens originally, we don't use that for that reason anymore. They are used specifically for emergencies, storm events at this point, so, and they are tested every single month. So, you know, the current system we have is the best notification system we, you know, that we can provide at the moment for specifically the downtown areas. The good thing is that there is quite a few alerts, different apps that people can get and download, and, you know, they are going to be getting notifications from Rutland or from, you know, from the state immediately. So there is more notification options out there today than there ever has been, but that doesn't mean we can't explore our own upgrades to the covered system. I guess I would say.
What's the part?
Well, there's one for 14,000 and one for 1,200, so.
Is that just a speaker though? That's not the actual system, that's just a speaker.
Thinking like we're going to put one on the other side of the town, and then a new one here. But to me, I think the remote is the key feature, even if you only have one, because
Well, that's why one is kind of set up remotely right now and one isn't. Is there a way to possibly set that, when currently we have is a remote, maybe that would be the first thing to step to look into? We could set it off easier, if we couldn't access that building quickly, or
Maybe get a FEMA grant or something for it, to help it? Because I know they do a lot of the weather preparation stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get a grant to help with the cost or pay for it.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, we're getting more severe weather, it's obvious in the last couple of years that it's happening, so if you could just do some research, you know, see what you can figure out.
This one was very, this storm was, everyone was ready to go and everything worked out well.
Yeah. All right, so why don't we move on, you want to do your report for August?
Okay, yes, I can do that. Okay, I got the emergency management report for August. August 2nd, we assisted the town of Southbridge with their Pan Mass Bike Race. This is a very, very large event, thousands of bikes. This is actually the last year it's going to be held in Sturbridge, next year it's moving out to Worcester, I guess. So, but we helped them block some intersections as the race went through. August 3rd, we tested our alerting sirens, everything went normal. August 15th, they had a structure fire on Elm Street, we helped provide some road blockings and cones as they had some hose lines across Liberty Street. August 27th and 28th, Burnfield Road and Maple Street paving. We lent some signs and had a, set up a detour through Reed Street, Brook Road. Everything seemed to work out good there, it's got a pretty nice road right now. August 30th, two members, we went out to help Town of Charlton at Bay Path High School. They had their fireworks, we helped them out parking cars and stuff for them. It's a thing, they come help us, we help them, if we can. On August 31st, there was a pedestrian hit on Burnfield Road, which caused the road to be detoured again around Reed Street. Also, the sandbags that were bought have all come in, and they're all in the back trailers, they're kind of like a think of like a big hay bale, packed together, they're not filled or anything, but, so
How many?
Uh, should be six, about 6,000.
Wow.
Look at that, we got enough of sandbags for, yeah.
Going to need a lot of people and a lot of shovels to fill those bags.
No, didn't we get a machine, didn't we get a machine?
Um, that's, yeah, it might be in the works.
Oh, okay, I thought we hadn't.
We're working on that.
Okay.
So, but we get the bags.
Yeah. Well, that's the important thing, we need the bags, the machine is a luxury.
Yeah. And there was an attachment of the, to the report of the state Webby, Webby OC log, basically the same, attached to your report.
Okay, and then I have two sub-bullets here for you, September is National Emergency Preparedness Month, and then an update on the installation of flags on the poles and placement of new welcome sign, welcome to Warren sign.
All righty, so the September is earmarked as National Preparedness Month, which is time to check out your emergency preparedness kits, have a plan for your, say, family and dwelling. So it's basically time to think about to get everything together, we have some information out, out by the front doors here. I might put out some more bulletins and stuff, social media and stuff, just to get people, you know, make sure your car's has all the safety stuff in it. Basically prepare for emergencies, be aware of
Check your generators in case you lose power.
Generators.
Make sure they're safe, don't put them in your garage, leave your house and run them. Try to protect the generator, because that's not going to do well for your family. Make sure you have spare food if you make it stuck on your road. I worry about this, because I get stuck on my road all the time, just happened the last windstorm.
Yes, it did.
Thank you for your help on that one.
Yes.
And, you know, we, we have that frequently, and everybody up there can run off of generators somehow. And we always got to check out generators, make sure the fuel in them is, is fresh. Run them for a little while here and there to make sure they work, because the last thing you want to do is try to start them after you've lost power, and then they don't start.
It's good, well, actually, if you have the built-in units, sometimes they self-test every week.
They give you alerts.
Yeah, I would, if you have a generator, I'll pull those little pull ones, portable ones, start it up every month. Yep, I would, I would, if you have a generator, I'll pull those old pull ones, portable ones, start it up every month at least. Make sure you have some gas around safely stored in a container.
Extra food.
Yeah.
Flashlights, batteries for flashlights.
All that, all that stuff. That's all stuff you just start, take some time and think about it.
All right, and the flags?
So the flags, we got um, the Senator Warren from the Parkview Street near the poles down to the round of Common and then three in front of the business, a couple in front of the businesses in the Center of Warren. And then West Warren from uh, Central Street to Summer Street. We did get some help with the assembling the rest of the flags. Uh, though in this past windstorm, I noticed a few of them with the bottom, there's two clips and the bottom slid up. So some of the flags are kind of twisted up a little bit. Have to figure out how to pull them.
We might wanna look at a better clip system for them.
Yeah.
Before we put any more up. Clips on there don't seem
Yeah.
very good and I I've been try, you go through Westbrook Field and they have all their flags up.
Yeah, kinda.
You can see some of the clips are broken and they tried to use wire ties to wrap them around and keep the flag on. And, you know, it just, it, they're just very flimsy plastic.
Yep.
And it's holding the flag onto a pole.
It's kind of sliding, so try to hold that plastic, we can use that, but try to anchor that plastic to the pole a little better, maybe tape or some zip ties. I'm gonna try that.
It'd be nice if we we can get the, a metal clip that holds them because you know, although plastic can be very strong.
Yeah.
Metal is the sure thing and I I don't wanna see any of the flags on the ground anywhere.
No, and it's, I did fix two of them over by the common after the wind on Monday. But I noticed one down by the senior center was kind of wrapped up too. And we put uh, the one between police police station there and an hour later, a delivery truck took it out. So we had to bring it up a little higher. So a couple of places we're gonna have to go higher or skip a pole, find some other place to.
And we got twenty-five assembled, ready to go.
Or, you know, save a couple too on the side. If one gets broken, we have some spares.
Um, how long are you gonna keep them up?
That was one thing I kind of wanted to ask. Uh, definitely wanna keep them up through Veterans Day as a purpose, try to get them through Veterans Day.
It's the week after Veterans Day.
Should we try?
Sure.
Because agree, you want them in for the winter, right?
Yeah.
Back out for the April.
So Memorial Day, right? We go from Memorial Day to Veterans Day roughly?
Yeah, because during the winter, it's just between the ice storms and the storms we get.
It would be.
They're just gonna get weighted down and then plows going by. It just, I don't wanna see them getting destroyed and stuff.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we take them in after Veterans Day, the week after Veterans Day and put them out before Memorial Day, you know, the week before.
Yeah, the brackets will stay on the poles and just slide them out.
Yeah, okay. And then this way we could fix anything on the poles too that needs to be fixed.
Or if a flag, I know maybe even Veterans uh, agent would have some additional funds possibly to replace flags if need be or something down, you know, as time went on.
Yeah, we still got two extra poles and we we need two flags for them, two more nylon flags. But um, if the pole gets damaged, we get two extra poles for it. We just didn't have enough flags.
Yeah.
All right.
To work the progress. Good job.
All right, thank you, Jim. You got anything else?
Uh, but the signs, the
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Town Warren signs. So I'm thinking, um, I brought this up at the CDAC meeting too. As you come into town via Southbridge Road extension by the South Warren Cemetery, you go by the Apple Orchard there. So these were Ware Road is too. So you're going through multiple towns, you're going through Sturbridge, Burnfield into Warren. And sometimes those type of roads get people. We're not quite sure where they really, oh, have they reached Warren yet?
See owls in the end.
An owl might. So um, I was thinking to have that signs, one of those signs somewhere up on that Southbridge Road. As you come into that, that area, cause the Route nineteen sixty-seven, they're marked with uh, state DOT, those white signs.
Yeah.
You have something a little bigger. Town line signs are a little small, you know, so something up there and then uh, I was thinking Ware Road. As you come into Ware Road is another, cause you're coming from Ware, going to Palmer. Exactly where you reach Warren, you know, people aren't quite sure. So those are two areas that to think about.
Kind of a
Strongly recommend.
Kind of a road that's kind of high traffic and dangerous.
And a lot of people. Yeah.
Because of the way it keeps on switching.
Yeah.
It's very curvy.
Yeah.
And it'd be very hard to find a flat area, cause everything is.
Well, it's basically when you're coming, coming past the town line somewhere right on the into Warren there.
So we already have a a sign on the west end of sixty-seven?
Yep.
And we have, do we have another one on sixty-seven?
Um, well, the state does. State has a nice big one right at the Westbrook Field Town Line. It's Westbrook Field one side and flip it around.
So if we're gonna do the new ones on sixty-seven either end, then we'd have to, we can move the one that's on sixty-seven now to nineteen.
Well, you, we can't move the state's.
You can't move the state's.
No, no, the one at the west end.
You're talking about the the old cast iron one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're talking about moving that one. Put that out somewhere else.
Yeah.
But our thoughts were putting them on the main roads where everybody drives in.
Yeah, but I'm just saying you have signs already there. You don't have any signs where I just said, just Southbridge Road and.
Well, that's where the old, the old cast iron sign could be put.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd be hesitant to put anything over on Old Warren Road because the the way it kind of it it's a dangerous road.
Uh, yeah, I like the idea of nineteen, or I mean, yeah, Southbridge Road, not nineteen.
But, or either that or you get a better town line sign or something. Cause there's, there's confusion of when you come into from Ware Road. Having a nice, actually Ware has one as you come in from, if you look next time you go down, there's a sportsman's club on your left. The bottom of that hill.
Welcome to Ware.
Yeah, welcome to Ware. So that's pretty much what was built. So that's why I was thinking we put.
How about the intersection of Washington and Southbridge? We have a little corner over there.
Yeah, that's such.
Brings you way into town.
You're already, you're already way into town though.
Yeah, but it's, it's not a
If you don't know if you're Warren by then, lost.
And that's why your Rogers Farm intersection there, Brookfield Road.
The one down there, it's close to the, to the center of town.
That's some, somewhere on that intersection.
Yeah, the one by uh, the old treehouse.
Yeah.
Same concept.
Well, and so anyway, I think the vision was to put them on, the new ones on either, on either end of sixty-seven.
Okay.
And then take the old one out and put that somewhere.
All right.
So I would say put that on Southbridge near um.
Something in the mix here, if you're gonna get more plant, uh, more signs made or something.
Yeah, I think the old, little metal signs could be put on the back roads if we need to do that.
South, Southbridge Road is.
You don't need a big expensive beautiful sign marking a back road.
These two roads I've mentioned are not back roads.
No, I I I travel Southbridge all the time.
They're, they're heavy, they're, they're our ways out and they're evacuation routes there. If need be, they're not, you know. But.
All right.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, chief. Fire chief monthly report.
Evening, everybody. Adam Lavoy, Fire Chief. Thank you for having me in tonight. Um, I have my August two thousand twenty-five Fire Chief's uh, monthly report. Uh, we responded to forty-four fire calls in August of two thousand twenty-five, which included seven motor vehicle accidents, nine medical or second medical assists. That uh, our ambulance is already out, so we had personnel go to the scene of a second medical call. Uh, five activated alarms, one call that was canceled after being dispatched, seven service calls or welfare checks. One vehicle fire, three power line incidents, one cooking fire, two illegal burns, three structure fires, one brush fire, one gas emergency, one sprinkler activation, one investigation, and one hazardous material situation. I responded to seventy-three ambulance or EMS calls, uh, fourteen of them required a listen or dimension. Uh, we did seven smoke and CO inspections, two oil tank uh, removal inspections, two oil burner installs, one sprinkler permit and one liquid propane tank. Uh, in terms of trainings and activities, uh, Warren fire personnel trained on our new slope evacuation rope setup. Uh, this is uh, uh, equipment that we have recently uh, got off of a grant. Uh, one of the firefighter safety grants that the board uh, recently approved and and signed the contract for. This equipment allows us to uh, safely and and in a much uh, more uh, professional way to be able to get people up and down slopes if they have to. Someone that fell in the woods, they were hiking, fell off a, you know, a, a, a steep incline. Were able to get them onto a Stokes basket, use, use ropes and use a pulley system to be able to get, have the responders bring them up to, to, to be cared for. So that was again, equipment that came off a grant. We actually have a practical evolution. We just did in-house training to get the hands-on for the new equipment for the, for the troops. Uh, we have a uh, practical evolution plan for that at the end of this month, which we're gonna take place at Lucy Stone. So we've already talked to the parts department as well as uh, Tim O'Brien, um, and showed them exactly where we're gonna be. And they were more than happy to allow us to use that area. There's a nice slope in the back where the trails are that we can practice some of those evolutions. So we plan to do that at the end of this month. Our EMS personnel trained uh, or had an online call review with uh, Bay State Health, uh, which is basically what we call, refer to as an M and M round. Um, which is they review different high acuity calls uh, from all different communities and they don't list patients by name. They just talk about generally, you know, what the call was, what the interventions were, what the outcome was, all the way from the start of the call when EMS came on scene, all the way to the person who was discharged or or whatnot from the hospital. So it goes over every single intervention they've had along that way. And it's really good for EMS personnel, the nurses and the doctors to hear that, to pick up on any mistakes that were made. You know, what could have been done better, what was done great. Uh, you know, so those are always nice to see and they are required. We're required to do those uh, every year. So uh, we had one of those. We'll be having another one of those probably towards the end of the year. All of our uh, EMS personnel are required to at least get two credits or two programs worth of that each year. The budget is is going well thus far. Uh, no major issues of any kind. Continue to watch uh, those line items very closely and report on any issues that may come up. But uh, right now, everything's looking good, so.
All right, great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Questions?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, good evening. Uh, so this is a, my monthly report for the month of August. And in August, I conducted a department head meeting on August sixth. Also on August sixth, I met with the Board of Assessors to discuss their plans for staffing uh, and operations of their office. We, we talked about two models, either outsourcing services uh, for uh, for staffing or direct hire. Uh, we executed the final eviction uh, at thirty-eight Elm Street uh, uh, in Au- in in August. We also uh, cleared out the property, cleaned the brush, removed the overgrowth. Um, and the property is now listed with a real estate agent. Uh, later this evening, you're gonna be uh, considering uh, an offer on that property. Um, uh, two, the two thousand and seven senior center wheelchair van, um, that was decommissioned by the board. I placed that on a municipal bid auction website, uh, and that sold on August twenty-fifth for fifty-six hundred dollars. I'm pleased to report to the board that we received a bank check from an individual out of Pennsylvania who is going to be um, uh, refurbishing the um, the wheelchair van and giving it to a, a young family in need uh, of uh, who has been recently um, paralyzed. So um, it is going to a, a, a good cause and um, and I, I think we did get a, a considerable amount for the, for the van. Uh, I did meet with the Chair, the Board of the, of Selectmen, Mr. Ihacker, Chief Lavoy and Chief Mallett to discuss uh, possible other options uh, for the next proposed pub- public safety complex meeting. We are currently uh, putting up some of those um, uh, some of the, the, the points that were in that internal meeting. We're, we brought that to Tecton and and Tecton is currently working on that uh, in anticipation of our upcoming September twenty-seventh meeting here at one o'clock. I'm also working with Energy Conservation Inc. in the Quaybog Regional School District um, on the Green Communities uh, application uh, for Warren Community Elementary Center for a fall grant cycle. That's for the green communities. Uh, we're hoping to do a weatherization um, uh, project over there and some insulation as well. Uh, in August, I attended the administrative board meeting for the newly formed Central Massachusetts Regional nine-one-one district. Uh, we continued discussion about acquiring new communities and a new, new dispatch location. We are currently uh, looking at um, uh, one community that just recently came on, the town of Spencer. Uh, we are also uh, uh, currently talking with uh, the town of Sturbridge as well. Posted positions for police officer and highway heavy equipment operator. We have vacancies in those positions. Um, and we also, I also participated in a project kickoff meeting with Time Bond at the wastewater treatment plant for the scum pump replacement project. For financial departments, the total tax collections as of August thirty-first were three hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Uh, that comprised of real estate at three hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Personal property at a thousand three dollars and twenty-five cents. Motor vehicle, uh, uh, motor vehicle uh, excise tax, eleven thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Interest and fees, four thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Registry clears, seven hundred forty dollars. Mobile home parks, one thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and municipal lien certificate fees of three hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, any questions?
No, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, number five, review and discuss a proposed contract amendment on time and performance, time of performance between the town and Weston and Sampson for work being done on the town common improvement project.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, this is a, a small time of performance extension to extend uh, until um, September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-five for Weston and Sampson to finish up uh, the, the work that they're doing on the town improvement, uh, town common improvement project.
Okay, so they just need a more time?
Yeah.
All right, and we need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a motion?
So move on.
Is there a second? Well, you gotta make an actual motion.
No, I was, you didn't ask if he had any questions.
You have any questions?
Nope, no questions.
Questions?
No, I'm good, sir. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed contract amendment for Weston and Sampson in the town of Warren on the town common improvement project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye. Motion carries. Discussion on potential dates for the spa- fall special town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. Um, I've had some preliminary discussions uh, with our uh, our departments uh, at our last department head meeting. Um, I had also circled back around with um, uh, the town accountant, uh, as well as the town clerk. And um, we typically have this uh, sometime in mid-November. Uh, a lot of this is predicated on uh, when free cash is certified. Um, and so uh, with looking at some potential dates, um, we, we were looking at either uh, November thirteenth or the twentieth. However, um, you know, uh, I think internally, um, the twentieth would work a little bit better and would be a little bit more comfortable uh, for um, for us getting our uh, free cash certified and, and um, in, in, in being able to uh, to have everything ready for the meeting. Gives a little, the partners a little bit more time.
Yeah, I'd say the twentieth, twentieth?
I'm good with that.
It's okay with me.
Last year, we had it on the twenty-first, so it's, it's about the same, same time. Day earlier.
It's in my calendar now.
So we're gonna do six to whatever, right? Six P M?
We usually have the special at seven.
Seven, okay.
And then we have a um, a meeting with FinCom and uh, the moderator and legal at six thirty. And then we have a, um, a meeting with FinCom and, uh, the moderator and legal at 6:30.
Can we do this at the high school?
Yep. I've asked, uh, Steve to reserve, uh, the space.
Okay. So special town meeting, November 20th?
And I will contact the moderator tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Hey, yeah, we got it right. Review, discuss and possible vote on a purchase offer for 38 Elm Street and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign a purchase and sales agreement for said property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Chairman, before you this evening and before the board, um, is, uh, is to review the offers that were, that were, uh, that were made, uh, on the property, uh, 38 Elm. Uh, that is a, a property that the, uh, the town has, uh, taken in tax title. Uh, we have, uh, title on the property. Um, we received, uh, three offers, uh, on the property. Um, the property, uh, is listed at 189.9. Um, and the three offers, uh, were all cash offers. Uh, and the property is being sold as-is. Uh, the three offers, uh, were $85,000, $130,000, and the final offer, uh, was, uh, $151. The, uh, the initial $151 offer, uh, made an offer at $130, uh, and then a counter was, um, entertained at $151. And so the highest offer's at $151 right now.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So to be clear, um, what the town actually owes that we have invested in this property and everything comes up to what total now?
Somewhere between $80,000 to $90,000, once everything is, 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 you know, invoiced out.
So if we accept the $151, the resident gets whatever's left over and we are free and clear. And then the new owner is paying taxes on that property and it's no longer the responsibility of the town. And there is a lot of damage to that property. Um, hence why we wanted to make sure that it's as-is. Um, and whoever purchases it knows what they're purchasing as-is.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's what it says.
Yep.
Yeah, there's no inspection.
No.
Well, they can do an inspection, I guess, but they gotta buy it.
It doesn't affect, affect this.
Knock yourself out.
Yeah. I would say the $151s, you go with the maximum vote, well, maximum amount.
Yep.
Uh, benefits everybody. It shows us clear and it gives them some money to start over with wherever they've gone.
Well, and once we cover our costs, it doesn't really help us to go any higher.
No.
Well, I mean, we can wait for, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can, the intent of this legislation, this new legislation is to maximize the value of equity for the potential previous owner.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not us to just say, "Okay, let, let's get our money and run." The purpose of this exercise was to have it listed by a, a broker or a real estate agent, have it marketed, uh, have a clear and transparent process and to get as much as we can, uh, for the property in the current condition it is in, so that whatever equity is there is returned to the previous owner.
Yeah, I guess my point is though, I mean, it was, what is it, listed for $189, we're getting $151. There's no sense in trying to wait and for more offers to get, and it-
$190 or $200, it's not gonna happen.
Cash, cash deal and the longer we wait, the more money we put into it, so the more money we have to take out of it.
Yep.
So it doesn't mean we're benefiting anymore because at some point, we're gonna have to turn the heat on or, you know, winterize the house. And then if there's any storm damage to the property, we gotta fix that to make sure that the house doesn't fall down. You know, it just, I think-
I think unloading it.
Unloading it, we got our best office offers, we had it out there, we take the maximum amount and everybody got, got the best situation they can get out of it.
There is carrying costs and you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. The carrying costs, we have insurance costs, we're going to be heading into the winter season, weatherization costs, um, you know, uh, just maintaining the property, um, you know, there's costs involved. So, um, you know, after speaking to the, uh, real estate agent, she had recommended that after, you know, a couple of weeks, the property does become stale and then we have to reduce the price and, you know, as, as, as the market continues to change and it can change at any time, you know, prices do fluctuate. So, um, you know, I think that, uh, the real estate agent is, is confident that this is the best at this time that we can get.
Yeah. And winter's not the best time to be selling a house either. People typically don't want to buy during the winter.
Yeah.
Also, we have to consider the neighbors around because if it sells for too less, their home's value goes down. You know, so I think it's a, I think it's a good because it, it says sell as-is. So at least that gives that notion that the houses that, on the, surrounding neighborhood are not that price, they're a little higher.
Right. I think the best thing out of it is no longer debt and we got somebody else paying taxes back to the town for it.
Yeah.
Yes. Or hopefully they pay the taxes.
It's a win-win situation, I believe.
All right, so I think we're all set.
I'm good.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the offer of the $151, uh, $151,000 for 38 Elm Street and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign the purchase and sales agreement, uh, on said property.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. So the, Mr. Chairman, what will happen is, is that once the purchase and sales agreement, um, is drafted by, by council and, and both councils had a chance to review it, it will come down, you, you will be able to sign it. And then at, once the closing happens, we will need the entire board to sign the deed.
Okay.
All right. All righty. Report from Ty and Bond regarding the examination of the awning slash marquee over the main street side entrance to the police station.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, a- as you may recall, we received a, uh, a, a letter from, uh, our building commissioner, Bill Cantel, uh, regarding the, uh, structure, um, located at the old town hall, uh, police station, the marquee. And that's on the side entrance, uh, on the main street side. Um, his concern was that the marquee, uh, wasn't structurally sound. Um, uh, I did, uh, go through the files, um, as requested at the last, uh, meeting. Um, and I could not find anything, um, that, that talked about specifically, um, this marquee and its structure. Talked about some of the other structural issues, but not this marquee. Um, uh, so I did call up, um, Weston and Sampson, I called up Ty and Bond. Uh, Weston and Sampson had a, a very large price, uh, to, to do a, a, a simple analysis. Ty and Bond, I, I don't think that they're gonna charge us anything. They typed up this memo, uh, they had a structural engineer come out, uh, they, um, they went up there. Um, it was clear to them that, um, there, at some point on the roof of this, um, marquee, uh, something had, had fallen on it. And, uh, he, he's, he's, he, he believes it, it may be, uh, ice or snow, uh, that, that came from the top of the, uh, town hall building and slid down and, and dented the roof. You can't really see it, um, but dented the roof. Um, in photo two, you can kind of see a little bit in the corner there. Um, but he, he, he reaffirms that, he, he feels that structurally, uh, the, the marquee, the awning, um, i- is structurally sound. It is not a, um, it is not, um, a hazard, uh, at this time. Um, he believes that at, at another time, and I believe it was commented, uh, by, uh, a member of the audience, that there was a truck that backed into the, uh, front of this marquee. Um, and that happened some time ago, maybe unloading something, um, into, uh, that entranceway there. Um, you know, um, he, he said certainly the town could, um, take apart the, the roof a little bit and, and do some more, uh, inspections or, or some more observations. Uh, but, uh, he recommends that, um, you know, that, um, at some point the town may want to, um, you know, replace some of the, um, the chains that, that seem to be somewhat rusted, um, that is helping support the, uh, marquee. But, uh, the good thing is, is that the structural engineer had indicated that, um, he doesn't, uh, in his professional opinion, doesn't feel that it's a, a threat to public safety at this point.
All right. Any questions?
No, sir.
Nope.
Okay.
Good news, it's not an immediate threat.
Yep. All right. Number nine, review and discuss building commissioner property inspection report for 48 High Street Shepherd Municipal Building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, before you this evening is a, uh, an inspection report by our building commissioner, Bill Cantel. Uh, he just provided us this, uh, last week. Uh, some of these items, uh, on the, um, uh, on his report, um, have already been addressed. Um, some of these items, um, will need a little bit longer of time period to address. Um, for the most part, um, the items seem, um, minimal. Um, however, um, the, uh, the bigger items are the wheelchair lift, uh, as well as, um, some of the window issues that he's highlighted that we've talked about.
Yep.
So one of the things he says is, "Conditions observed which constitute a violation," and that's the locks on the doors, the bolts?
So there's, there's some bolts, um, I think particularly the one in the basement in the old boxing room that has a padlock on it. Um, and that should not be the case. So we have to, uh-
So we'd like a, like a door lock?
Door handle, yeah, door lock.
Okay. Yeah, some of these are probably easy.
Yeah, the door's about to fall off the hinges anyways.
I mean, the one about the extension cord with the refrigerator.
That's already been addressed.
Yeah, okay. Some easy. What was the deal with the flammable liquids?
So, uh, the Parks Department, and I already had a conversation with them, they had some paint, um, in, in, in their office and, um, they informed me that they will be moving it, if they haven't already moved it, out of there into some other container.
Okay.
We gotta have the, um, the electrical panel marked better?
Yes. There's gonna be a, uh-
Good luck with that one. It's an whole building.
No, we can just put it on the, on the door.
I know, but you gotta track down what rooms everything goes to.
Right, right, right. I think he's just looking for, uh, an electrical room sign placed on, on the door.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not the individual circuits.
Okay, so he wants to just know that handles it.
That's the electrical code.
No, it's you-
Yeah, by code, you need to have a sign.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
We are working on these and we will get these corrected.
Okay.
The ones that will take some additional time, uh, are the windows and the chairlift.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Number 10, discussion with a possible vote to appoint Christopher Copaco of 2270 Main Street to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term. All right, so we, go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chris couldn't make it here this evening, but he did sit, provide us with an email, um, outlining, um, his conversation, um, with, um, the State Ethics Commission, um, General Counsel, um, and, um, provided him with the clearance to be appointed.
Okay. All right, so they cited two sections, section 19, which is more financial, right? And section 23, which is more just general influence. So I was, after I read these, one thing I would, if I can address Ray, is probably the best thing is if the planning board's having a special permit discussion, don't talk to Chris about it because it could end up in front of him. So the best thing is not to share any information, you know, that would be a great way, um, to keep it, keep a firewall, you know?
Of course.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a few. Yeah, I, I do have deep concerns about this one and purely because, you know, we all know Ray's his dad and Ray's on the planning board. There's inherently a, a conflict. And anybody that goes in front of the ZBA, um, could use that. And I, I really feel the ZBA should be completely void of any conflicts, even the mere appearance. And one of the big things is, um, the mere appearance of one, that could be an issue. Um, whether there's a legit or financial or anything like that, it's, it's the fact that there could be an influence there. And I would hate to see the town lose appeals because of that being used against the town and be a mere influence. Um, I think he would be amazing for any other board, okay? Or I'd be pu- I'd put him in this if, if Ray wasn't on the planning board. Um, and he was running for it, then I wouldn't see an, any issue with it at all. Or if he was going for Board of Health or any other board that wasn't, wasn't hearing appeals that may come from the planning board directly. Because a lot of appeals come out of the planning board, whether it's a decision that somebody wants a variance on or wasn't happy with a decision that the planning board made and they, they would have to see that. So just putting him in that position could put him in that, um, appearance that something could be there. And I'm very concerned with that. Again, I think he'd be great with any other position, just the ZBA is probably not the best position for him, um, as long as, you know, Ray's in the, um, planning. And if either one of those changed, I'd be good. But I, I don't think there should be two family members being in, in concession, in succession like that where one, one family member is hearing the, hearing a decision, making a decision, and then that decision's being appealed against or, you know, they're, they're, the br- appeal is being brought to the ZBA for it and then being heard from another family member. And it, it's not even if something would be done, it's just the fact that somebody could use that against the town saying, "Hey, they're family members, obviously he's gonna side this way and that's why I lost." Um, and that would be a mere appearance of a, an, a conflict of interest. Um, it doesn't have to be financial interest. It's favor is, favoritism for, um, somebody else or favoring an opinion from somebody else. And, you know, it, it just sets the town up for a bad position and I wouldn't like the town to be put in that position. I think anybody else could do that job and I think he could do any other job, um, just not overseeing what the planning board's decisions are.
So let me just, I can read this, right, this attorney?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I'll just read part, portion of this. "An appearance of conflict of interest would arise, uh, for you," this is talking to Chris, "when in your ZBA role, you perform duties that would affect-" when in your ZBA role you perform duties that would affect or involve the planning board, which would include your father, and in which your father does not have a financial interest, and where the matter would not otherwise raise issues for you under nine, section nineteen, which is the financial. In such a situation, an issue arises under section twenty-three B three, because your relationship with your father creates an appearance of a conflict of interest. Um, however, provided that you can act fairly and without bias as it relates to your father, you may dispel the appearance of a conflict of interest if you first file a twen- section twenty-three B three disclosure form disclosing the relevant facts that you would cause, relevant facts that would cause a reasonable person to conclude that there is a risk of favoritism or bias before performing your official duties. Um, so it, it can be cured, but that doesn't mean somebody's gonna go after the town and say-
It, it still can be argued.
Yeah.
And how can you prove that he's not just filling out the form and still favoring one way?
Okay, yeah.
You know, the rules are in a, they're there for a reason, and this conflict, I, I don't say he would do that, and I don't think Ray would do that either, and I hope they wouldn't, but it's the appearance. And I think he'd be great for any other job. I, I will absolutely vote for him for anything else. Just the ZBA is not the job. Um, you should have that appearance, and just that mere appearance kinda kills it for me.
Okay. Yep.
As a former architect, and gone through many, in front of many planning board members, many CBA, I, I feel okay.
Okay. Yeah, I have to say, I, I totally understand what you're saying, um, but, um, you know, it can be cured, and I'm, you know, if you, you and Chris can keep things separated, you know, I, I think that's okay, but, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I, you know. It, it would've been better to choose another board, but this is what he's done, so, um, I think, you know, I think it can be handled.
Yeah. Carrie has a question.
Yeah.
We're good. I'm good.
Go ahead.
I'm Carrie Smith, clerk on the ZBA. I just wanna say, not everything that comes before us is an appeal of the planning board decision.
No, no.
Um, any variance applications, that doesn't really have anything to do with the planning board, that has to do with violas of the town. People can, um, file for this ministry appeal on, on a building inspector's decision or on the planning board-
Yeah.
-decision. I don't see why anything, any appeals on the planning board decision, he couldn't just recuse himself from the conversation or from the vote. I mean, that would-
Yeah.
-dispel any, any appearance of conflict of interest, because he could just take himself out of the equation.
That would even be better than doing the form.
Frankly, we have so few administrative appeal requests that, I mean, I don't even think you're talking about, you know, one percent of the cases or two percent of the cases. We're not a very busy board, and it's not like, you know, appeals are pouring, and most of what we get are variance applications, so.
Right. Appeals we've gotten have been like the solar, right, co-farts, or bigger projects.
I don't think we've seen anything from co-farts.
Oh, they didn't, uh, no, they didn't go through the CBA, they just sued us right away, I guess.
It's pretty much been solar for the last-
Yeah.
-ten years. I mean, it's not, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of business other than that. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not predicting what's coming up in front of us, you know, who knows what the future can bring. But again, if, if there's any appeals of a planning board decision, he could just recuse himself and not get part in the conversation or, or the votes.
And you have enough members that if he recuses himself, you can still vote?
That, thanks to Joe.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, you had another?
I was just curious, Carrie, do, do you remember when was the last case from the planning board that went to you?
Yeah, it was the ZPT initially, which was, when did that start? Twenty-twenty-one? So they, so they were appealing, and I believe that's the only, um, appeal of a planning board decision we've gotten in the eighteen or twenty years that I've been on.
And what was that about?
That had to do with, um, so they, the solar installation didn't get a, a certificate, a certificate of occupancy, because they didn't follow the solar, the bylaws, they were too close to the property line, and they didn't have an appropriate buffer space. And so, the planning board didn't approve, and the building inspector didn't approve, and so they applied for a variance and for appeals of the planning board's decision, and so they were, they wanted a full slate of, uh, you know, appeals and variances.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, any other? So-
Question? I, I'm, I'm still very concerned with this, because even though there weren't a lot in the past, it doesn't mean there won't be some in the future. And the mere appearance of it causes conflict, and if Mr. Condrat's out, or Carrie's out, then it comes down to their, those two votes. And if he recuses, then there's no vote. They, they don't have a vote, they have to have somebody else. So if one of them gets sick, or one of them leaves the board for some reason, then you're left with two members and you can't make a decision, and there's timeframes that you have to have decisions on, right? If you can't make that timeframe because of a decision, it automatically gets awarded to whoever is there by default, because there was no decision made and it didn't meet the timeline. So I think we're setting ourselves up for failure by doing this, because even if he recuses himself, and Joe's a no, and Carrie's a yes, there's no vote.
No.
There's no dividing, there's no splitting vote. You need, that's why you have three parties, three voting members, so all three can vote and decide.
Well, it's a five-member board.
But you only got three now, right?
No, we have-
They have a full-
If you guys are playing Chris, we'll be back up, back up to five.
Okay, so you'll have five members.
All right, so, somebody wanna make a motion?
Which number is it?
Ten.
Make a motion to vote to appoint Christopher Copaco of twenty-two seventy Main Street to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Well, you can, I can, I'll second it.
With inertia.
All right, all in favor?
No.
Well, no, hold on. All in favor?
David, yes. Aye.
Okay, Rich I. Harker, aye. All opposed?
David Dufresne, opposed.
Okay. The motion carries two to one. Approved. All right. So Chris has gotta show up on, um, Monday?
Yes.
Or before the next meeting, to get appointed. Would it help if I called him and talked to him just about Mr. Dufresne's concerns?
It's up to you.
It's, it's not my appearance, it's whoever goes in front of that board and says they weren't treated fairly because of whatever, and then they fight it on that and they get down to the core.
Okay.
And that, that's, yeah, I express my opinion, it's done, but-
No, but I'll, you have his phone number, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can you send that to him?
Yeah.
I'll give him a call and just, you know. Now that he's appointed, he's just gotta like, be aware of the situation. And since he's not here today to hear it-
Yep.
I mean, he could watch the meeting, I guess, but he may or may not, so, I'll call him.
Okay.
All right. Um, discussion with a possible vote on a common victular license application-
Victicular.
Victicular? License application for Countryside Tavern located at eighty-three Mechanic Street.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have the proprietary, yep, Mr. Sizer's here, proprietor here, Mr. Sizer, could you come up to the podium?
Yeah, come up, tell us, uh, your name and what's going on.
My name is Brian Sizer, and, uh, I never really had a, uh, vision to own a bar, or, and, uh, I had contacted Carrie, I, I, well, actually, let, go back in history a little bit. So, I, uh, I started working at bars, uh, probably two thousand and eleven. Uh, I started as a bouncer, I had two or three years of that, and then I started DJing. Um, my trade is a locomotive engineer, and I've been-
That's cool. He's all over the place.
Yeah, so I've been, I've, I've been everywhere, so, um, and that's, you know, I've got, uh, I got thirty-seven years on a railroad, so.
Which railroad?
I started out with a Central Run.
Okay.
And, uh, I did ten years freight, and then, uh, in ninety-nine, I started with Amtrak. So I've been at Amtrak since ninety-nine.
Wow.
So, and the military, uh, I, uh, I joined the military in the, uh, United States Army Reserve when I was seventeen. Uh, and that was in nineteen eighty-seven, I retired, well, I went to combat, um, for Desert Storm, uh, and then I retired in two thousand and seven. Uh, fire department was the same year, October ninety-seven, uh, eighty-seven. I'm still on the Palmer Fire Department as we speak now. I don't do much now, but I've been there, so, I've, I've eaten some smoke, um, in the early years. So, uh, uh, I've been DJing the last three years or so down at Glenda's, and I did, did the karaoke and whatnot that she wanted. So, uh, I knew the place was up for sale, it had been for a while, and, uh, so one night, I'm sitting there and Carrie had posted something on her Snapchat or something, I read, and then I'm like, oh, she's awake, so I says, hey, I says, uh, the, the new owner's up there, and she goes, no, they, they backed out. So I'm like, oh, 'cause I was gonna say if they needed a DJ. And, uh, so then she says, well, you wanna take a, take a look? So I'm like, okay. So she says, come up four o'clock this afternoon, so I'm like, all right. So I went up there, took a look around, and I'm like, I think there's something here. So, you know, and here we are.
Now you're a bar owner.
So, yeah, so, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm kinda blind in a lot of ways of this whole business thing. Uh, so forgive me if I, I'm not purposely trying to, you know, go around people or whatever, if, if something happens, um, I, I'm, I don't know. So, um, yeah, and, uh, so I, I've got the place, I've been working, uh, there's more screw holes and bolt holes and everything in the walls. We stripped all the walls from TVs and pictures and whatever. Uh, so we've been, um, covering those holes, painting and whatnot, um, hopefully have the floors done in a week or so, and, uh, and I think there's some plumbing that has to be done, uh, that they're getting a permit for.
Good.
So, uh, yeah, uh, the bar's gonna be, uh, military and first responder theme, um, so we're gonna have, uh, that's kinda like what it is, you know? So, uh, and I hope to, uh, you know, maybe we can draw some people into, into town, so.
So when would be the opening?
Uh, I'm not sure a hundred percent yet.
Couple months or-
So as far as the alcohol goes, obviously, I gotta go through that whole permitting process, it could take up to six months. Um, my initial plan was, before I knew all that, uh, was I was gonna do the alcohol first, and then I was gonna start working into the food. So now, the, the roles have reversed, so now I'm gonna try starting with some food and then work into the alcohol. Um, so, uh, trying to redesign the, uh, the upstairs there, um, there's been a, a little griddle and a prillator, and, uh, a couple other little things that up there that people, that they've cooked on over the years. Um, so, hopefully if all goes well, and I, everything fits into this space, uh, you know, burgers, hot dogs, sandwiches, grinders, maybe some soup, pizzas, um, I'm looking for a short order cook, so we can, we can get this thing together, and, uh, we'll go from there as far as that side of it goes. On the entertainment side, I think I got the DJ thing nailed down, and, uh, so, but there'll be, um, uh, pool league, dart leagues, um, there'll be, uh, you name it, uh, whatever I can get up there. Uh, one of the things that everybody's been asking me for, and I told them, I says, I have no idea, I'm gonna have to look into it, I don't know if you guys have anything to do with it, but they all want horseshoes and, um, cornhole. So, which is fine, without the alcohol, but it's all outside, so.
I think that's all up to you, though.
Well, I, I think-
They couldn't have out, they couldn't take, you couldn't carry out, you'd have to leave it-
Well, that's the thing, so, there's-
Well, no, he can fence off area.
Yeah.
Right.
As long as it's fenced off and marked, so people can't just walk in there, you'll can only access it from the bar.
From within the bar, yeah.
Right. But there's so many different, um, so, and this is where everything starts to get gray, and I start getting, it's like, you know, you see some places where you walk out the door with your drink, where you sit is over there, like, um, take, uh, Russo's, for instance, in, uh, in Palmer. So you go out, and you walk through openness until you get to the spot where you're gonna sit and eat. So, and it's legal, but yet-
Well, they're getting away with it.
And then I, I've talked to, I've talked to, uh, um, the, shit, I can't think of the name of it now. It's not, uh, it's over in Monson there. But anyway, the ABC came, yelled at them, and they said that you have to put cones, so people know where to walk. I'm like, so now we're just at cones with a little bit of caution tape? You know, I, is that, is that what I can get away with? So that's where I'm, I'm like, I'll do it, but, you know, if it costs a hundred thousand dollars for fencing, you know, then it's not gonna be really worth it, so.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that much, though. You, you could even-
Yeah.
As long as it's a fencing material, and, not that I'm telling you where to shop, but you can go to the co-op and buy, you know, eight-foot garden fence-
Yeah.
-and run it along there-
Yeah.
-with fence posts, and you're probably gonna spend a couple thousand dollars-
Right.
-you know, for all your materials.
So, but then there's the, the size of the property, too. It's huge for where this would be.
Well, I think it's, it's only where anybody can walk naturally. If it's wooded area in the back, or somebody else's property, you-
Oh, so that'd be considered a blocking, see, that's where I don't know.
Yeah.
And that doesn't seem really clear, and I didn't know if you guys had anything to do with that or not, so.
You would really have to have a look at it, and that's where you'd probably need to get with ABC's.
Yeah, I don't rely on anything we're telling you.
Yeah. I'm just looking at options for you.
Yeah, 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 I got you.
You're not experts by any stretch.
Right.
But it would seem if you enclose it, and you can only get out through the bar into that area-
Right.
-you would be okay, but-
Well, that's why, you know, that's why the whole thing with the cone thing with the ABC, actually, the, the-
That seems a little-
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, I'm like, but it's, they have to follow the path from where the cones are, and I'm like, well-
I'd be worried about that with my insurance, though.
Yeah.
You know, your, your insurance, because I'd probably run that past them, because-
Yeah.
-they might have some concerns with that, 'cause what if somebody trips over a cone?
Yeah.
Have to have a few cocktails.
Yeah, yeah.
Or just walks through the-
Or walks through and right out, hands it to a kid.
Right, I, I, you know, I-
Do you have any background on this kinda stuff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I would just, Mr. Sizer, if I, if I can, um, you know, when you do apply for your, you know, your liquor license, you know, there's specific questions within the application that will specify where you're wanting the permit to be permitted to. You know, if you're gonna do something in the backyard, you know, the town may wanna see, what is your noise plan? What is the plan that you're gonna have to, you know, regulate the area, where beverages are gonna be, you know, you know, consumed and, and mapped out, so, um, you know-
So, you know, you know, it's possible to have this stuff, but it'd have to be spelled out in your application, and the board would have to review it.
Right.
So the more you can think this through.
Right, oh, it won't be till next year, anyway.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be this year. Yeah, I gotta get my feet, you know, wet first. So.
Did you have something, Adam?
I was just, the only thing I would highlight is the expiration of the CV. It expires, so applying now, it would be for twenty twenty-five, so it would expire on the thirty-first of December. And then you would have to renew for twenty twenty-six. So I guess that was kind of just the whole thing of trying to get the idea of when you were gonna open, because you might be able to save some money if you just, you know, wait until.
Wait till the end of the year.
January first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that is a possibility. I mean, I don't know, you know, it's kind of like, you know, am I gonna sell enough food? You know, people give me the idea that I probably will, but at the same time, well, I'm in one of those balancing games now where it's, does it make sense to do this or do that, you know?
But it's gonna be easier to sell food if there's alcohol there, too.
This is true. This is true.
Who doesn't want a burger and a beer, right?
Yeah, I know. So they're gonna come and, you know, get a burger, and then there's, you know.
I'll get two cheeseburgers.
There you go. Right.
Yeah. Well, so just back to that, yeah, think about your timeline. I don't know if we were gonna actually, we were gonna vote on this potentially.
I have the draft CV already ready to go, so if you guys decided you could sign on it, we would just need the fee.
You can always postpone this, or you can just hold on to it.
Well, so, I mean, okay, well, I need it for the liquor license to apply.
So what will happen, Mr. Sizer, is that you're gonna get, probably when the CV applications go out in November or late October, you're gonna get another one. So you're gonna have to pay the fee again and have to come before the board again.
Cost of doing business, they say.
Unless you want to wait.
No, well, I can't really wait, simply because of the liquor license. Because the liquor license requires this.
Because this license that if the board grants you tonight would only be good until December thirty-first of this year.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that was just something, because I know we had talked about it before. I just wanted to be transparent about that when it would, so it didn't seem like we're trying to squeeze an extra twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, sure, I'm sure you are.
That's going towards my burger, one you guys.
Okay.
Yeah. How much is this CV license?
Twenty-five dollars.
Oh, for God's sake.
Yeah. Yeah.
If it was a couple thousand, I might, you know, you know.
If you're having trouble affording twenty-five dollars.
I'm in trouble.
Yeah.
I shouldn't even be here.
Yeah, yeah.
You mean it's not twenty-five grand?
No, no.
You sure?
Also, one of the other things I wanted to put out there, that I just happened to think of, is the history of the place. I mean, so I'm guessing it was somewhere around thirties and forties that it was built. And it was the Polish club, I guess, for decades. I will be putting, like, I'll be looking for pictures, old pictures, from whenever it began, as far back as I can get. And I'll post them up on a wall in there.
Talk to Sylvia Buck.
Yeah, she may have.
Yes.
She is.
Yeah. So I've chatted with her. She came up, she came up to the bar there shortly after I got it, and we sat there and she, she, she talked to me for probably an hour and a half. And she brought me all kinds of history of the, but the only thing, and she didn't know, and nobody I've talked to yet has known, is the monument that's up there, that the flagpole is on. Is, nobody knows. It says nineteen thirty on it, but nobody knows anything about it.
Dr. Bista Chondrat, he might be able to pull something up. He's a local historian.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so.
All right, so moving on, then, you want us to go ahead and vote? You're good?
Absolutely.
Even though you have to reapply.
Yeah.
May want to ask if there's anybody in the audience that has an objection or?
Yeah, any other, are we good up here?
I was just gonna ask him, you're doing a menu, what kind of food?
Uh, yeah, so maybe burgers, hot dogs, pizza, maybe some soups every now and again, you know, a couple days a week. Sandwiches, grinders. And what I wanted to is, is I understand there's a higher Polish population in the area. I want to do some kebabs and guampis and pierogies and stuff like that.
That would probably be a good niche for you, because there's nothing really around here for that.
Right.
I'm sold.
Where any niche I can get.
That would probably be a good angle for you to look into. Yeah, we have very big Polish population in the community, in West Warren and Long.
Okay.
And then, the other thing, so you're army, and I know you favor the army a little bit here. I'm a Marine. Are you still gonna welcome Marines in there being military oriented?
Ah, well, let's see. The door is square, so you'll be able to fit.
As long as you have plenty of crayons for us to eat, we're good.
Yep. No, that's the other thing, if you have any, and I have, I told Griffin there, any pictures or whatever that you have, military pictures, and the same with the fire department, from anywhere around, best pictures you got, I'll hang them. And there'll be patches and the whole nine yards.
We handed everything to Sylvia, so.
Well, I mean.
Mrs. Buck has all that stuff now.
Yeah, well, military first responders, so like on Palmer, like, so we've got boxes of pictures. So I'll just go through and pick out the real good ones, and then, you know, the chief can come up with some. I've got, I got Palmer gear. So I figured I'm gonna have to hang some Warren gear if he's got any old Warren gear.
Well, knowing firefighters, you gotta keep it clean, too. Yeah, it's a family place, too, right?
Yes.
All right, so any comments from the audience?
Ray Kapak, resident. I'm curious, what's, is there, is this something being voted on right now?
Yeah.
So has an application been submitted?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Oh, okay. It was unclear that there was an actual application being submitted, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's all. Is, after the application is submitted and considered, isn't it, I'm not against this in any way, by the way. I just want to make sure the process unfolds properly so that there's not a snafu. Isn't it, isn't there a requirement for a public hearing, or is that what you're considering this?
No, it's just a liquor license. But this is just for food right now, too.
This is a common vic license, not a liquor license.
But either, neither one has a hearing, per se, right?
Well, the liquor license. There's a public hearing for the liquor license.
Oh, so we have to advertise that whole thing? Okay, so not for this one, which is food.
Okay.
But for the liquor one, there's a two-week notice and stuff like that.
I'm not objecting, I'm simply asking for the sake of clarification, so that he doesn't run into a unnecessary snafu.
Yeah, yeah. So you have the process down at least as well as you?
Yes, this is the best I can.
Okay.
For somebody that's kind of like walking blind into the whole thing.
Yeah, you checking with Griffin and Jim.
Yes.
To make sure you do everything right.
All the things, you know, to get this license, you have to do this. To get this license, you have to have this and that and that and this and, yeah.
It's a big process.
It's crazy.
You look like you're up to it, though.
So, yeah.
Yeah, you're looking confused, it's gonna be awesome.
Yeah.
All right, so if there's no further questions, do we have a motion?
Are Marines welcoming us?
Absolutely.
All right, then.
Not your logos.
Yeah.
All right. So can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, where are we here?
Number eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve the common vicicular license application for Countryside Tavern located at eighty-three Mechanic Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Veliz, aye.
Richi Hucker, aye. Approved.
Congratulations, sir.
Step number one. Well, maybe step number two, but yeah, good luck.
We just need to collect the fee at some point.
Oh.
So, yeah.
Do I get to take it home with me?
Um, we do have it to.
No, do you have a check?
Yeah, do you have a check?
I know, it's legal currency.
Yes, I do. Actually, I have one in my trunk.
Okay.
So I can.
We'll sign after the meeting.
Yep. I have it right here, so.
Okay, we can sign it now.
Yeah.
So I got a lawyer working on the liquor license, because I'm just.
Is that just me? Oh, no, this is all.
It's the whole board, yeah.
I'll be right back with a check.
Okay.
Unless you're, you're done, right? As far as that is.
Yeah, yeah. You're approved, we're just gonna sign this, you give the check, and then we'll give that.
And if you need to sign, yeah.
You have anything to put in?
I don't have a pencil.
Senior town, where am I sent? Permit license, senior contact person. That's what was lying here. It's a blue gun.
It's a black one, yeah.
I didn't see that.
That's a cute.
That's even worse.
Yeah. It's horrible.
I'm just gonna go make a copy of this.
Okay, all right. All right, moving on. Continued discussion from eight August seventh on the recent inspection of the two wheelchair lifts at the Shepherd Building and upon hearing, the upcoming hearing with the Architectural Access Board, AAB.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I wanted to update the board on the wheelchair lift discussion that we have been having the last few meetings. I have applied for a variance application with the Architectural Access Board for two variances. One on time and the other on a complete replacement or modification to the existing wheelchair lift. So we have a hearing that has been doctored for September twenty-second. It is a virtual hearing with the Architectural Access Board. The application that I filled out is in your packets, and it is requesting the two variances, one on time and one on replacing it with a, either a modified or a brand-new wheelchair incline lift. The time, it's gonna take time to, number one, procure a new wheelchair lift. It's gonna take time to install it, to order the parts. All of that is gonna take some time. So I've asked for an estimated of eight months from the date of the hearing, which is September twenty-second. At that time, hopefully, the hearing, we were granted the variances. And if we are, then we are going to move forward with the procurement, and then hopefully get it awarded, you know, shortly thereafter, and have a contract in place, ready for signing right after special town meeting, assuming we get the appropriation of funds.
Okay. So part of the hearing is to make sure that we don't go and install this thing, and then it's not up to snuff, right? It's not like an approved device?
Well, yeah, I mean, we want to ask for permission to replace it exactly with what is there.
Yeah.
You know, we certainly don't have the capability, means, to put a, an elevator in.
Yeah.
You know, that would be ideal, but that's one point five million dollars plus. It's just not realistic, unfortunately. But, you know, you know, I think that this would be an acceptable solution to the situation by replacing it with, you know, either modernizing. What I mean by modernizing, putting all, everything new, except for one of the boxes up top that could potentially be modernized. It would save the town some money. Or if it was to go all out, brand-new, with a potential different vendor, you know, it would be a little bit more money.
Okay.
So the procurement would state, you know, modernize or replace.
Okay. So twenty-second, so by our next meeting, you'll have, well, you're just doing the hearing. How long does it take, what's the turnaround on?
Well, from what I'm, from what I was told, the next day I should know the decision.
Okay, so by the next meeting, we'll have an idea of what we're.
So, you know, on a modernization project, you're, you know, the budget, what you're looking at for modernization is probably somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars for a complete new device. You're looking somewhere, you know, somewhere around ninety, eighty to ninety.
Okay. Yeah, you got ninety-three out here.
Yeah. Those are estimates. We have, we have, I drafted a plan to address accessibility needs for the building. I talked about it at our department head meeting. Department heads were notified to assist and help out anybody who is in need of, you know, accessing the building. We're gonna provide curbside service if needed and if requested. There's a, there is a buzzer out there that does work, and if somebody hits the buzzer, somebody from either the tax collector, the town clerk, or the board of selectmen's office will respond immediately. And there's also a telephone number out there to contact the administrative assistant, and a prompt response will happen. It is posted, and we've instructed how to handle this with staff. So we've signaled that to the access board as well, you know, to display to them that we do have a plan to help address while the lift is down.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Are you sure that eight months is enough?
I'm hopeful, you know, I'm hopeful. I think, I think it can, it can be.
Can we have an extension just in case?
Yes, so if we get to say month six, and, you know, it's, you know, clear that we need more time, I can go back to the board and ask for an extension.
Okay.
Okay.
Probably you will need it.
All right. Mr. Duff. Report from Quabog Regional School District Superintendent Steve Duff on district operations.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to publicly thank the finance committee in Warren, the board of selectmen in Warren, Jim Ferrera, the town administrator Kowski from Westbrook Field, the advisory board from Westbrook Field, and the select board from Westbrook Field for your efforts with the budget this year. I know that it was a lengthy process. I want to personally thank the board of selectmen from Warren for putting an article on. I think that collaboration of working together and having a common vision as we move forward, and having the trust in each other certainly pays off for all people that are involved. So I want to start off by thanking you guys for supporting our students and our teachers. And I think that with some of the reports that have come out, which I'll share with you guys in just a minute, I think that your investment in our students and the opportunities that they have now is just a testament to how we work together and get things done. So I want to publicly thank you guys for that, because that was a big day for everybody within our towns. So thank you for that. We did have our first day with our students and our students last week. Prior to that, we had a week of professional development. During that professional development time, I want to thank Chief La Boy and Chief Mallett for coming up, speaking with our staff, looking at our buildings, working on our safety protocols and our Alice protocols, which is important, not just for our students, but more importantly for our staff, so we know what to do in case there was ever an emergency. I can't say enough about the efforts of the Westbrook Field, Warren Fire and Police Departments in those areas. Once again, our partnership with them has never been stronger. Recently, in the US News, I don't know if you've seen it or not, but out of seventy-five schools in Worcester County, Quabog was ranked the tenth-best school in Worcester County, without any of our neighboring towns. Any town that touches Quabog, we're ahead of all the towns. The closest town was Tantasc. The closest town was Tantasc, where they were ranked twelfth. Quabog was ranked tenth. If you look at us in the national rankings, we're in the top eleven percent across the country. So if you think of all the schools in the United States and Little Quabog and Little Warren is in the top eleven percent, I think that speaks volumes about our educators and the information that our students are taking. And I know we talk about it a lot, but when you look at moving to a town, I looked to move to Quabog with my kids because of the school district. When you start looking at moving to towns with kids, the first thing that you do is you look at what the school's like. And when you have a school such as Quabog that's in the top eleven percent in the country, as well as the highest-ranked school around us, I think that speaks volumes in your commitment to our school district and our students is starting, you know, it has paid its dividends. But I wanted to share that with the board, because that's something that our town should be very proud of. And I'm certainly very proud of the effort of our kids and our staff. If you've noticed, at Quabog, we are building a concession stand on the end of the football field. We did get an earmark from Representative Smola, so that building that's being built is not costing the school district any money. I do wanna recognize Fountain and Sons. I didn't know Jim was gonna be here tonight, but Jim is here, and I would recognize you even if you weren't here, Jim. Fountain and Sons has done a tremendous job of working within the budget that we have, and even doing a little bit of donating on the side to help this project get done. We'll now have three working bathrooms and water down at the concession stand, which will be a huge improvement from the two porta-potties that we had. I know Mr. DeFrain was at the football game the other day, and using a porta-potty with four or five hundred people there is not terrific. So it certainly will be a big upgrade for us. So we're very thankful to Representative Smola for getting that funding for us, and super, super appreciative of Fountain and Sons for all the work that they're doing there.
Can I just speak of that? Yeah.
I have to say, I was looking at the concession stand, the building's beautiful. You guys are doing an amazing job, good work. It looks great, and the fact that the town didn't have to pay anything for it is even better. But I have to say, you're doing outstanding job and good work over there. And that building went up quicker than I ever expected it. I'd seen him pour into foundation like one week, and the next thing I know, there's a building on top of the foundation. And that was fast. Yeah, so, good job, and it looks amazing.
Yeah, and that speaks volumes about what, how Jim contributes to our school district. So thank you, Jim, and thank you, Derek, for helping out with the plans. So your plans are coming to life as well as, as we're watching it. So once again, hopefully we'll have that done within the next few weeks, and at our next, not this upcoming football game, but our following home game, hopefully that will be ready. And we are keeping the other smaller concession stand on site, just so that you do know that. And we're gonna allow the Pop Warner to use that concession stand, so they'll have their own concession stand, so they don't have to bring stuff back and forth anymore. So we're trying to partner with the folks that, for the feeder programs for all of our kids in our community. IVAC, as you know, we did have a three-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar IVAC grant to upgrade all of the controls at Quabog, once again, at no cost to the town, like the concession stand. We did apply for that grant, we did get it. There was a lot of work that was completed over the summer. We'll be completing the, completing that project over the next month or so. So I'm hoping, like we saw at Warren Community Elementary School, the project that we worked with Mr. Ferrera on, that we'll see a savings in oil on that, which will be spectacular. So we're trying to make things as efficient as possible. We did apply for a green community grant, project specific to regional school districts. It's a DOE R grant for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We'll find out on that in March, it's, the second round will be in March. We have chillers that are on the rooftops, and they are no longer functioning, they're, they're original chillers to the building, and they're super expensive to replace. So we're looking at, we're making a proposal to put mini splits in different office areas and the auditorium. As you know, it kept warm in the auditorium because the chillers don't work. So we're looking to get grant funding to take care of those projects. So I will keep you updated on that.
So you're just gonna take the chillers off the building and just, they're gone?
They're gone, and then they would insert the mini splits in the different areas, which, if one mini split goes, then you can replace that. If one chiller goes, we run into problems. So we're trying to be more efficient with those pieces and without costing the town more money. I do wanna give a shout-out to Town Administrator Ferrera. He's been working very close with Mr. Estrella on the green community grants and trying to offset the cycles. So that partnership, both with Warren and with Westbrook Field, are starting to pay huge dividends down the road, and we continue to look for different ways that we can be efficient to offset, you know, our assessments to our towns. Today, we did participate in the nine-eleven ceremony down at the fire station. We had twelve of our new cadets down at the fire station with Chief Lavoy and members of the Fire Department. It's hard to believe that it was twenty-four years ago. I can still remember sitting there, watching it on TV, and not believing it. And I think, maybe it was Jim or Seth that said today that, you know, the kids that are down there weren't even born at that point. And I remember it was like yesterday. But I do wanna thank Chief Lavoy, we thank him a lot, but we wanted to thank him for including our Fire Academy kids in that. The Fire Academy continues to put out more and more firefighters every day. So we're looking for this group to certainly contribute. I know Adam can talk more about it than I can, but I know we have several students that completed the Fire Academy and that are now part of the Warren and Westbrook Field Fire Department. Our EMT class, we had a very suc, we had a very successful year last year. All of the kids passed the first half, and I think we're up to three that passed written, Adam? Yep, we have three students that have passed the written portion, so there, we have three students that are certified as EMTs coming out of high school that costs them absolutely nothing. We did open up a class, open up the school for, a program for adults that is running on Monday nights now. There are sixteen adults that are going for their EMT course now, which is outstanding. I think anytime that we can open up our school district to community members to come in and give back to our communities is outstanding. And it was interesting, I went in, and there were so many familiar faces that came through Quabog, and what they said is, "We wish we had this program when we were there." So I wanna thank people for that. Out of the fourteen CNA students from last year, fourteen are employed as CNAs, either at Quabog on the Common, Cedar Brook, or, oh, Brookhaven. So fourteen out of fourteen are giving back to our community, so those programs continue to, continue to give back. We will be having a Trick or Trunk in October. That's a big event that we have. We partner with the PTOs, and Parks and Rec usually help out with that. Jim McKean, I'll give you a shout-out with the CERT team. Jim always helps out with the CERT team. They're always readily accessible to us, so we're super happy about that. We are coming up with a school alert, which might sound like a town alert, but we will be coming up with an app. Mr. Velez has helped the school district come up with a school alert app that will be able to shoot out quick messages to our commu, to our families within our communities. You know, if there's a snow day, or if there's a sporting event that got canceled, we can do real live-time like you do with your town alert. We can do that through Quabog, so you will see that. If you're a parent in our, in our school community, you'll see that rolling out very shortly. And we thank Derek for your help with that as well. North Brookfield tuition. We started talking about the North Brookfield, potentially looking at North Brookfield for a tuition agreement. I did present to them, I wanna say either June or July, talking about the potential and the benefits of coming to Quabog. I guess one of the big things is, when you look at our rankings, Quabog is, you know, out of all the districts that are interested, Quabog is the top-ranked district. Right now, there are two districts that are interested in tuitioning with, with North Brookfield, Quabog and Quabin. Quabin did present to North Brookfield as well. North Brookfield will meet again on September seventeenth to discuss it with their task force that was assigned by the school committee. We are working very actively with North Brookfield to hopefully make that a reality for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, which would be not this year, but obviously next year. And we're hoping with a tuition agreement, we can get more funds in than we do with school choice, which obviously will help offset the local assessments. I talk about the tuition agreement being sustainability. It's about how can we help our towns afford to continue to educate when, you know, and we know the state doesn't properly or adequately fund us? If we can find different revenue seams, or revenue streams like we have with energy efficiency, if we can bring more kids into our district at a higher rate than the five thousand dollars we get for school choice, then I think we're gonna see some big dividends next year, if we can get this done. So I will work very hard on this over the next couple of months. I'll report back to you on the progress that we have, but I feel optimistic about it. And I think that might be it. I know it's a lot, but.
Yeah, so North Brookfield is considering either Quabin or us, that's what you said?
Yeah, there were presentations made by both, by both school districts. Quabog was the first to make their presentation. And I think between the programs that we offer, the education we offer, the AP courses, the CP courses, I think it puts us in a relatively good spot in the fact that we have such, our community is very united between the police, the fire, just having those relationships, you know, seeing Adam and Jerry and the police and fire coming through the building, not because we need them there, but because they're truly committed to our communities, I think speaks volumes about what we have to offer. You know, it's all kinda coming together, which is, you know, where we like to see this thing moving.
Any questions?
No, I'm very, very impressed and very happy to see everything's working out now. Everything's flowing well. I go with. Yeah, there's, there's always gonna be little glitches here and there, but between your leadership and whoever else is involved, they're tackling these issues and getting them resolved. And I'm very proud of all of you, and I'm very proud of our administrators there at the school, the teachers, the para-professionals, everybody that assists and does their part. And it's very encouraging to see all the kids coming out of there, learning trades such as fire, and the EMT program, and the CNA, and phlebotomy, and you also have robotics too. And you have lots and lots of programs to offer these kids to, to give them a career soon as they come out of high school. And, you know, without going to college, investing hundreds of thousands of dollars into a college, they already have a career that they can pursue. And their careers that the community can definitely utilize and help them out. And I'm very happy that you're community-focused on what the community needs. More firefighters, more EMTs, more, you know, police officers, those programs, because those are where the towns are really suffering. Not everybody can be an influencer on the internet. You know, we do need our firefighters still, and people to take care of our residents. And you're doing an amazing job with that. Thank you very much with all that you're doing.
We appreciate it.
When is the trunk retreat?
Oh, you had to ask me, didn't you? There'll be a flyer coming out on that, Mr. Velez. It is, I, it's Thursday, October, do you have your count? I can tell you, just one second. Thursday, October thirtieth.
Thank you.
I should've asked you, Jim, because I asked you the CERT piece, I just can't remember, I got a lot of dates in my head.
Awesome, I also wanna, I wanna mention, I wanna testify from two students, one being my son, who was a senior last year, and he had all the colleges open the doors to him. Very, very, very proud of him. The other one, it's, it's, his name is Eric, I can't pronounce his last name. He was a student at Quabog. He's one of our programmers in the office. He's awesome, he always remembers you very kindly. And so, I can see the potential of all these students. And I'm super happy about the ranking. That means more families trying to move into Warren.
Yeah, no, it's important, it really is.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, no, we appreciate it.
Alright.
Alright, thank you. I hope you have a great night.
Alright. Anticipated vote to authorize the payment of warrants and bills. Every time I read this, I think we're gonna give the responsibility to somebody else, because that's what it sounds like, but we're not, are we? You're doing them, right?
Yeah, I blew them up, big text, so it's easier to read.
Yeah, because he's getting old.
Yeah.
Actually, I just passed my nearsighting test, and the doctor was like, "Wow, you don't need cheaters yet." Yeah, and I'm like, "Thank you." So, it's getting there, not, not yet, though. Alright.
Paying attention here.
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll zero-four dash twenty-six for one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Payroll number zero-five dash twenty-six for a hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Accounts payable number zero-eight dash twenty-six for four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, ninety dollars and sixty-two cents. Accounts payable zero-nine dash twenty-six for eighty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Accounts payable number zero-nine alpha, A, dash twenty-six for ten-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and seventy cents. Accounts payable number ten dash twenty-six for nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifteen cents.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Slims and Berthium Sewer Services for eight-hundred dollars. Skaggs Enterprise LLC for one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Sablack Landscaping for three-thousand dollars. P E A C for six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Masters Telecom for ninety-three dollars and sixty-two cents. KP Law for three-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Associated Building Wreckers for two-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. How Lumber Company for sixty-one dollars and six cents. Serview Locks, Serview Locksmiths for seven-hundred-and-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Amazon for one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and nine cents. CMR PC for seven-thousand dollars. Verizon for one-thousand, ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. WB Mason for fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. C Two Adams, isn't that supposed to be C Two MA Adams?
It wasn't a pass.
Is it C Two MA Adams?
Yep, C Two MA.
So C Two MA Adams for two-thousand, six-hundred-and-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Hamden Communications for one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. American Tower LLC for two-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. LOLs for one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents for a total amount of twenty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Seventy-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye, motion carries. Town Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So for my weekly report, as I start my weekly report, I just wanna comment and, and, and offer our thoughts and prayers to an employee who was out on a medical leave at the sewer plant. We hope that his speedy recovery and speedy return happens. This week was a very busy and productive week. We had interviews for the ACO, Animal Control Officer, this week. Myself, our current ACO, Tammy DeFrain, and Chair Rich Ihacker participated in the, in the interviews. We had four, four interviews were scheduled. Two individuals showed up. At our next board meeting, two individuals will be hopefully coming forward for consideration to be appointed, which are, you know, the two interviews, one is going to be the person that was selected or recommended for the ACO position, Deborah Young. She is currently a, the ACO in Brookfield, and Ryan Davis as the alternate, who is currently the animal inspector for the town. Two uniquely. Um, two, um, uniquely qualified individuals, um, hope to have them, uh, at our next meeting, uh, for consideration by the board. We had a, uh, department head meeting, uh, this month as well, uh, in conjunction with, uh, Maya, uh, our risk management. Uh, provider, uh, Deb Williams came out, uh, provided staff with some updates, uh, on our risk management plan. Um, uh, informed staff of, um, trainings that are being offered by Maya, uh, and encouraged department heads to sign up for those trainings. Uh, I've currently, um, am, uh, working on getting, uh, Webster Glass. And Eastfield Glass, uh, to come by and look at the, um, the windows, uh, here. Um, I had, uh, mentioned the project to, um, uh, to our, uh, our architect and engineer. Uh, Weston and Sampson, they had, uh, recommended that I contact a glazier. Um, you know, to get those, uh, part of the windows is plexiglass, the other is, is, is full glass. And they had recommended a glazier company come in and, and potentially, uh, get rid of the, um, the plexi. Um, and put glass there, not having to disturb the existing window, which would be quite expensive. Um, to, uh, to do. Um, we would also need to, uh, just make aware. Um, and, and to see if the plexi has any type of compound around it that. You know, if there is compound around it, it would need to be tested for any type of asbestos, um, before, uh, before we start touching any of that. Um, so it is an involved, uh, project. It's not something that, you know, it can be done, you know, quickly. Um, and it is noted on, on the building commissioner's report. So, I am working with glaziers, um, two of them, uh, one Webster Glass, Eastfield Glass. Um, trying to get some quotes and, and some ideas of what they're proposing, um, for some fixes. I know winter's coming up, um, we would like to at least get the, um, the, the, um, the, the plexiglasses that are, um. You know, really, uh, bowling out, uh, fixed, um, if not all of them, but at least those. Um, I am working on developing an RFP for auctioneer services. Um, I think it's critically important on the heels of, uh, Thirty-Eight Elm, uh, to continue, uh, the town's efforts to. Um, uh, recover some of the money, uh, that is owed to the town, uh, and back taxes. Uh, by the sale of, of, of town properties that have, have been deeded, uh, to the town prior to, uh, November first of twenty twenty-four. Uh, so I am working with the, um, with the treasurer. I'm gonna have that RFP drafted within the next two weeks. Um, and that will be going out for services, um, uh, for auctioneer services. Um, and as soon as we have an auctioneer in place, uh, I, I would really like the, uh, treasurer to, um. Uh, to, uh, work with the auctioneer to get these properties, uh, um, listed and sold. Um, we, uh, I am also currently working on, um. Uh, the honor ro- uh, the honor roll wall that is outside of the, um. Uh, the, the library, the, the, the Warren Library, um. Uh, Mr. John, uh, Mr. John DiJack from Rural Improvement came to see me, um, about a month or two ago. Uh, and asked for some assistance in addressing, uh, the honor roll wall. Um, and he, um, and the, um, Rural Improvement Committee. Um, have designated funds to, uh, to, um, replace and repair. Um, and update the list of the honor, honor wall, honor roll wall. Um, and I'm currently working, uh, with a, a vendor, um, out of Springfield, Awards Company. Uh, they have specialized in, um, plaques, um, um, uh, these types of, um. Uh, walls, um, in, in different things, uh, for updating these types of unique projects. They have special. They have specializations in this. I've, I've dealt with them in Springfield. They, they are very good. Um, he, what we needed to do, um, was to come up with a, um, uh, a list. A, a list that can be manipulated for the honor, honor, uh, roll wall. And what I mean by that is, is I needed something that, uh, either in Excel or a Word format that has all of the names on there. The current names that are on there, um, are on maybe some type of paper that has faded away. You know, and curled, um, throughout the, the years of having the, 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 the sun hit the, uh, plexiglass. So, um, we've, uh, he's taken all the names, which there's quite a few of them, uh, from the American Revolution up to the Persian Gulf. Um, and, and have, have transposed them into, um, Word format that can be manipulated. Um, I have circulated this list to, uh, to Joe Conrad. Uh, to Sylvia Buck, to our veterans agent, um, and, uh, to John, to John DiJack. Um, and, and to try to preliminarily have them go through this list. Um, I know that, um, our veterans agent had provided me some different lists. Um, I know that the, um, the, um, the, the Sylvia Buck had provided me with some lists. Joe Conrad had provided me with some information. So, I've given all of that information to, um, to awards. They've, they've formulated this list. This is not the final list. This list is gonna be reviewed by those individuals, uh, and then will be updated. And then, uh, at, at that point, we will come back and we will put the list on the website. I will see if, if, if the newspaper could potentially publish the list, to see if we could get it published. Because I would just hate to see, and it, and it can happen, you know, this thing gets all finished and. You know, we have a, we have a, a, a ceremony dedicating it and somebody goes there, oh, my husband's not there or my. Son's not there or somebody's missing. We are desperately trying to avoid this. Um, and so if we can give people, you know, a window of time, whether it be, you know, a few weeks. Hey, look it, review these lists. If you see a name that should be on here, notify us, so we can put it on. Um, and, 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 you know, um, and try to get that out there so that there's a, an outreach effort to this, so that we can. Say, hey, look, it, we've, we've, we, you know, we, we tried to, um, we, we executed a outreach effort so that the list is, is up to date. Um, you know, uh, Mr. DiJack was, was really, um, adamant that he wants to get this project done and he, and he, and, and Rural Improvement. Really wants to help the town with getting this done. I know it's been talked about before in the past and I know a family. Did, uh, so much work with painting it and planting some, uh, flowers last year, um, you know. Uh, the list itself, um, it nee- needs to be, needs to be, um, you know, put on something. A little bit more sturdier, that's gonna last a long time. Um, it's not gonna be on paper. It'll probably be on some type of. Um, plaque of some sort that, that he, he envisioned making, uh, sections of it. That if you, if some, if there was a name that, uh, a section can be removed and you could add somebody's name. He, he, he's, he's very crafty at, at, at trying to put this together, but this is, uh, something that it was asked, uh, to be done. Um, they've asked, you know, they came forward to ask, uh, me to help them, uh, I, I'm, I'm hel- I'm helping guide them as. As much as I can, um, uh, to get the project done. So, you know, our, our goal here is to have it done. By Veterans Day, so that we can have, uh, a ceremony there at a new, uh, monument, uh, updated monument. Um, I'm hopeful that we can get there.
So, our default answer for a lot of this stuff is, can we throw the list up on the website?
Right.
Right, people have it.
And then people can email us and say, hey, look it, this is the list. If there's somebody that needs to be added, let us know.
Yeah, the paper sounds like a great idea, but if it's a big list.
There's quite a few. I don't think that they will, you know.
Yeah, or we gotta pay for it, right?
Right, right, right. But that's really the only way, you know, besides, you know, we're, obviously word of mouth. Um, this, this project was talked about when we had a veterans council, that they were, you know, you know, potentially gonna do this. Obviously, it didn't get done, um, you know, it still needs to be done.
Yeah.
My suggestion for using the paper would be, ask them to put something and they're referencing.
Yeah.
The website.
Okay.
Saying that that list is there and asking residents to take a look at it on the website, if they live in the area or.
Yeah, press release or something.
Yeah.
I would add that little catchy thing on the newspaper with a QR code direct to the online list.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Cause that way you're, oh, you can see everybody there.
Okay.
Cause if you just send them to the website and then you have to search on the website, hmm, sorry, it's, it's not easy. People don't like click, click, search.
Yeah.
And then, um, also, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, uh, I did attend a Chamber After Five event. For the Quabog Hills Chamber of Commerce, uh, last week, uh, at Workshop thirteen. In an effort to, again, promote the town, uh, let people know what we're doing here, what plans are going on. Uh, 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 out and about in the town. Let people know that we have, um, some vacancies in, in storefronts and. I mentioned, uh, about the, uh, the bank building, uh, at the Chamber of Commerce. I said, you know, it's perfectly set up for a bank. You know, anybody looking to, to relocate, whether it be a bank, office space, whatever the case may be. These are events where, you know, people talk and chatter. And it's important if we, if we have, you know, somebody out there cheerleading for the town, going to these events. Uh, you know, letting people know that, that we have availability in what we offer. Um, I think that's important and I, and I did go to that Chamber After Five event. I know, Rich, you were there and I, um, met up with you. But, um, you know, it's important to, you know, to get that message out to people.
Jim did a great job promoting the town too.
Did he?
Yeah, he did. Yeah, it was very good. All right, thanks, Jim. Alrighty, any new business?
Nothing, sir.
Old business? All right.
Um, well, the old business, we have the list.
Oh, yeah, we can do the list real quick. Or just, is there anything on there? I will fill the whole thing, but is there anything on there that catches your eye?
Credit cards for the town.
Credit cards?
Uh, I am working on that with the treasurer, um, the, um, we're having some issues with some of the, um, uh. Current accounts, um, and we are gonna have some time to ad- address it. And I think we're gonna be able to, to get up with a some, a solution soon.
Okay. All right. Open here about the right to farm by law soon, maybe?
That's with the Board of Health, right?
Dan, Dan was working on that.
Yeah.
They're gonna bring it.
I gotta come back to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, um. We're getting ready to go live with Red Dot again. Uh, thanks to you for putting a lot of the people here. I went the other day around, make sure that everybody has it and explain them how it works. Um, I sent you guys today the list of the people who received the message, like ourselves. And later, you have to add yourself. Once that's clear, we, um, this week, this next week, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna send an email to all the authorities that we're gonna do a test. And after that, we call it live.
Okay.
Then the next will be the sewer and the senior center.
All right, anything else?
No, it's nothing, sir.
On the list, I'm sorry.
Well, there was like the flags, the, um.
We got the update on the flags.
Yeah.
How's the, uh, how's the website going?
It's going, uh, it, they, they're working on it.
Yeah, I could, I can give a quick update on that. They, after, you know, you guys came up with your decision for the design, I forwarded that to them. Uh, and then the next thing was they followed up with just some, uh, paperwork for me to follow, or fill out. Fill that out, gave it back to them and I'm waiting on a follow-up. But as far as I'm aware, and if you wanna back me up on this, they are, they. Once they got the design from us, they started working on the website.
Yeah.
So, when we get to see what, you know, actual progress updates of what it looks like and everything. Not too sure on that, but I'll, I'll make sure I get that to you guys as soon as I get it.
Okay.
That, that is correct. That, that, that's accurate. And, and, and also, what we also wanna do with the website too, I mentioned this to Griffin. Pictures. And I know Derek, you, you're, you're great with all these different pictures. And the public. If you have some pictures about town and, and, and different things that you want, you know, parks or, or any, any picture unique of the town. Send it over to us and we can, you know, send it to the website company and have them put, you know, different pictures that can be used. On certain pages of the website.
So, i- if town administrator gives me the catchy one to two sentences. I can make a post where people can upload from there and go directly to you.
Okay, okay.
So, I know we have department sites where people go to. How about asking each of the department? Departments to provide a picture that they would like on their site, that represents the town. Give them the input.
Yeah.
So, each department can look at something and say, hey, let's put this on our website. Let those boards, so it represents them better.
Yeah.
You know, this way, we're not doing all the work. Fire department, I'm sure they want something fire-related. Police probably want something police-related, historical. Same thing with any of the other departments.
Mr. Chairman, are, are the department heads gonna be able to edit staff and personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
It's a big problem with the last one, it just wasn't.
It better be able to. Just wasn't, it wasn't user-friendly to be able to do that, so it's a lot of that needs to be updated. So, hopefully, this is more user-friendly. If it is not, I, we had to do this anyway. If it is not, then our plan B is we have another place in the hopper that looked pretty good too.
We need the phone number and the homepage.
They, they did say. We couldn't do it ourselves, on our end, so it was just very problematic to be able to keep.
Well, you could've, but there's like eighty steps.
Yeah, there's like a million steps and it's.
I gave up, chief. I gave up.
Yeah, yeah.
You became the webmaster.
They, that was one of the things we clarified with them on.
Yeah.
Is the accessibility, cause the accessibility was not friendly with this current version that we have. And being able to empower the departments to update and, you know, make changes on their sites. It was very difficult. And this is supposedly a new type of platform. Which is much more streamlined and easier for people to do upgrades. We don't have to add a user. In four different places and give them permissions on each separate place and i- i- it is a whole process. Now you just add the person.
Well, we'll see.
Well, yeah, well, that's what they're saying. We'll see though.
We'll see. I, I create about five to ten websites every year. And this one that we have right now, it's no thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'll see how it goes.
All right.
Oh, one more thing about the website. Is it gonna be able to, like, say, we wanna put emergency message out? Is there anything?
Yeah, there should be, there's like a banner message.
Something, okay, something that could be updated and within ten minutes.
So, cur- currently, on the current website, it allows you to sign up to receive alerts. Um, you have to put your email address in there and you could push out, you have to log on to the website. And you can push out a message or a note or something like that. On the current one, it is a pain to do. And then that's only depending if somebody's looking at their email, it checks their email, then they'll get an email and they have to sign up for it. Um, so hopefully, this is a little more streamlined.
Say, someone's gonna log on and they can say, there's a, Brookfield Road is closed.
Yeah.
Something, something like that.
Yeah, there should be something like that. We have that now, so there should be something.
All right, I have a better update.
Yeah. All right, correspondence, um, I'll briefly, I'll whizz through these. So, we got a. Letter from the town of Ware, um, apparently our clerk, town clerk Lori lent them some election equipment. They were in a bind. I don't know, did they have a fire or something over in the Ware town hall?
No, I think they had some, uh, issues with, um, um, asbestos or something.
Yeah, they had a big curtain that was.
Yeah.
Fell down or something. All right, well, anyway.
I don't think they had the clickers, right?
No, this was. No, this was for their election.
Was it for the election?
Yeah.
The machines, the actual machines. Yeah, so anyway, so they were very thankful for that. What else do we have? Bill, do you know about this bill twenty-four thirty-two? Oh, the pancreatic cancer thing. I don't know what. We would just wanna.
It's just asking for a, a letter of support and I have a draft one written up if you guys wanna review that. Should you decide to.
I'm fine with it. It's like, what was it, the third leading cause of death in Massachusetts?
Yeah. In the United States, yeah.
Yeah. So this is just to help deal with it a little bit better. So if you guys are okay, you know, let's send a letter, just to support the bill.
I think the, the thought of it, it's great, but how? How will they, they, they're not saying that.
Well, comprehensive pantry, pancreatic cancer, education awareness, early detection programs with.
Awareness detection.
Bill aims to improve outcomes through better access to diagnostic tools, increase provider education and support for high-risk populations.
I'm good with anything to stop cancer.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Fight it.
Yeah.
Better educate.
Yeah, and I have a, I have a draft written up that you guys can review and then if you're good with it, sign.
Yeah, so send.
I, I have it right here.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, we'll look at it.
Yeah.
After the meeting then.
Yeah.
Alright. Oh, so the assessors wanna install a commemorative plaque beneath the tree that was planted in honor of Don Mikowski out here. Yeah, I mean, that's, I thought.
Yep.
We, that would've been a good idea right off the bat, cause there's just a tree there, nobody knows what it's about, so yeah, that's fine. You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So tell them, yeah. Oh, and then we have our town accountant Jaclyn asking. She needs to take courses, so she's paying for these courses and needs to be reimbursed.
Correct.
Okay. Again, yeah.
She's gonna do them.
Education is good.
Yeah.
She can do her job better, that's great. That's all the classes. Oh, and then, yeah, this letter from Mrs. Rose Swanson. I don't really know where this is, she sent a picture of a blinding light on Southbridge. North on Southbridge Road. It's near where Bemis goes off. But. I'm not sure how we, how do we handle this?
I drive down that road every morning.
I know what she's talking about.
Early in the morning and I've never seen a blinding light.
Well, there, there is one and if I turn my auto high-beam and low-beam at night, when you're coming down. Just that, close to that intersection, there's a house who has a big light and my car thing, it's a car coming, it turns out.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just one of those issues where the light, instead of being looking down, it's facing forward, so probably that's what she's talking about.
I don't know, how do, is it, can we do anything about this or?
Well, I mean, I, I, maybe you can send the, I, I mean, I don't know what the light is, I, I don't, is it a streetlight?
No, no, it's not somebody's property.
I'm gonna have to focus on them, pay attention to better than that, I've never seen it.
Possibly one of those spotlights, if it possibly just aimed down.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is, cause I, I have very sensitive eyes to light. So I'm always on to that and I, I, I remember that light at night, you know. I think, sometimes I think it's a car with high beams coming up and I turn my high beams, oh, it's the house.
I mean, I, I don't think that anything in the bylaw or the zoning that has anything that requires shielding of light, but.
Yeah.
I don't think it can be directed on the road, that, that might be a, that would be a building inspector thing. You know, may, maybe it's just not adjusted, like saying it's directed more towards the road instead of the yard.
Have some, some, whatever department send it.
Yeah.
You can refer to a, a code enforcement officer.
And just, okay, as a first step, just to see, okay. Alright. Okay, comments and concerns? Anything from the board?
So, I, I do.
Go ahead, he's looking.
So, yesterday, there was a tragic assassination on Charlie Kirk. He's a great American, great patriot. And he spoke to a lot of people, especially younger generations. And got them involved in politics and really had. A way about him to get people to talk to each other. And whether they believed either conservative values or liberal values. His thing was just to talk and discuss with each other. And, you know, yesterday, you know. Coward assassinated him and, you know. I think the United States lost a great patriot yesterday and along with the world. Because he was really resonating around the world with his voice. And I think i- if it's you approve, we should have a moment of silence for, to remember Charlie Kirk. And, you know, what he was trying to do and get, getting people to talk with each other. And not, not go for violence, but discuss their differences. And try to understand each other. And I think that was his big thing is not, not to use violence, but to talk to each other. And work out your issues and discuss the differences. And, you know, I, I think if we can, we should have a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk.
Okay, we can do that.
For everybody to bow their head for Charlie Kirk.
Yeah, violence isn't the answer.
No. And then, I also have a comment. Not to that no more, but to, back to Southbridge Road. Every day I drive down Southbridge Road to go to work. And I'm traveling down Southbridge Road about four, four-thirty in the morning, depending on when I leave. But each day, I have tow trucks and flatbeds driving past. The farm and passing me, heading to co-parks.
Oh, okay.
And I, I know there was, there was a restriction. On them being able to wait outside there and I'm hearing they're not following those restrictions. And, you know, I'm just saying, at some point, somebody's gotta enforce that. And start looking at, you know, those vehicles staging down there in that area at that timeframe. Because they shouldn't be doing that.
Yep, that permit was approved, so Jim, that would be, that might be police.
Yes.
Or building inspector, but.
Yeah, code enforcement, yeah.
Special permit condition and it applies even after that.
Yeah, code enforcement.
Yeah, special, it was a condition on their special permit so that. Their, their grant to get that.
Yeah, so the zoning enforcement officer with the building commissioner.
Yeah, so yeah, we should nip that in the bud, that's how.
The residents have been complaining about it too, saying that they're doing offloading of vehicles.
Yeah.
Right in front of their house, not up there. That they're, there's a lot of issues going on in that area with them still. And I know the special permit was there to stop that and make life better for the residents, but.
And it doesn't matter if they haven't started the project, it's, it got approved, so those rules are.
They're still doing it.
Yeah.
And the residents are very not, they're not happy about it.
Okay, yeah, so if you could.
We'll send a, send it to Bill on Monday.
Okay, thanks.
So, you guys have seen how much we mentioned CMRPC, that we do this, they get us grants, they help us and everything. And last time, we all gathered with them for a celebration because the town was awarded. And they gave us, everything was about two years ago. And then after that, we haven't been able to go because our town meeting is the same day.
Oh, their annual dinner.
And I think, I think there should be a possibility that we move that one week bef- up or down. So we can go to that annual meeting because they've been doing so much for the town. That you just can't say, oh, sorry, we, we can't go.
So can we change that at the special?
Uh, I think you could, yeah.
The town meeting?
Just move it one week, front or, you know, forward or backward, I think it's a good idea.
Because they've done so much for the town, I think they, they, they deserve our presence for that day.
They do, yeah. And they do appreciate us, kind of.
Yeah.
You know, anybody that can go.
Well, last time, they gave us a big prize and it was like Warren and Warren and, you know, so.
Okay, yeah, so if you can throw that on the.
On the Warren.
Special, yeah.
That's it for me, sir.
Alright, anything else? Alright.
Yep.
Audience, comments and concerns? Jim had his hand up first. Come up to the mic, tell us who you are.
Jim Fountain, resident taxpayer. I'm gonna give you a little history lesson, real, real quick, just a little bit, but anyhow. With the, with, I'm going back to the police department also, the police department had problems with the building or the town had problems with the, the town hall. There was rumors for a while back, it was condemned, everybody was saying the building was condemned, whether it was or wasn't, doesn't matter. But anyhow, there was even talk that they were gonna make the police department get out at a certain period of time, they had no place to go. They could conduct business out of the cruises, if that's what they chose to do. Meanwhile, shortly after that, the bank announced that they were closing, it was kinda like all in that timeframe. And Cornerstone Bank, I called them, I said, if you're gonna close, which was a detriment to the town of Warren, losing a bank. But I said, if you're gonna close, what are you gonna do with the building? And they said they were gonna get rid of it, they were gonna sell it, they didn't want anymore, they just wanted to get out of it. So, and a lot of you have probably heard my story or whatever, but I just wanna explain it a little bit better. So anyhow, as a taxpayer, as a concerned citizen, someone that loves living in Warren. I thought, what better place to have a police department was in the bank building. So, I purchased the bank building in hopes that the town could see that at some point. It's got everything that the bank, everything the town needs, it's in the center of town, we don't have to go behind rights, we don't have to go all the different places and stuff like that. It's where a police department should be, it's got carports, it's got everything, everything that the town, parking, it's got everything you need. So anyhow, and I knew that the town could not act as fast buying it without going to town vote and everything else, the banks seemed like they were in a rush. So I purchased the property. I've had many opportunities from different ones coming in, wanna develop into apartment houses and do all these different things. And I don't wanna see more, more rentals on Main Street in Warren, I'd like to see it stay as a business, I would. So anyhow, I've heard from different ones and even some of your, you, you guys on the board. Saying that it doesn't meet today's current zone or structures and it doesn't, it, it can't, you can't do it because it's, doesn't, it can't stand up to hurricanes. It can't earthquakes, everything else. So I took it upon myself and I hired a structural engineer to go and look at the building. So I'm gonna give you a copy of what he gave me, so you can look at it. And all I'm asking is, after you read this, I would like you to consider, cause I haven't heard of Plan B for a police sta- police station yet. I would like you to consider the town hall, I mean, the, the bank building as Plan B. If you don't mind, I'm gonna do some big audience also, so everybody knows what I'm talking about. But in nowhere, in the report, does it say that it can't be done. And it also doesn't sound like it's gonna be a, a major, major, major expense, it's gonna be a drop in the bucket compared to what we keep throwing around. Figures and stuff, and please don't get me wrong, chief, I'm not, I'm not here about downing the police, I mean, the fire department, I'm not doing that. It's just that our knees are a police station right now and we all know it. But, so anyhow, I'm not big on computers and stuff like that, but I went on the computer and I looked. And I asked a specific question, seeing does, are there grants out there for towns to refurbish old buildings? For police departments? And if you go in there yourself, you will see, there is grant money available, I don't know how much, it could be five bucks, I, I don't know how much it is. But it does say that there's grant money for old buildings to refurbish where there is not money for new buildings. So, I'm here only to say to you, I wish that you would consider the bank building again. I would be willing to negotiate, you know, in good faith, I would take anybody who wants to go through the building and whatever. But I just think common sense, the police department should be on Main Street, it has parking, it has, it's right next to current park, current parking as it is. And I think it would be sufficient, I mean, for everything we need. We're not gonna be able to afford a thirty million dollar building, we're not gonna be able to afford a ten million dollar building. But this building here, I think it would be just a drop in the bucket compared to what we're gonna commit to other costs. And that building is very structurally sound, I mean, you know, the banks maintained it for years and I've done the best I can to maintain it right now. But I just, we've been so busy everywhere else, I haven't even had a chance to wash the windows, but I'm sorry about that. So, but all I'm here for tonight is just to ask, you know, you guys to consider it as a Plan B. Cause Plan A is not, not gonna work. And I, I just can't foresee anybody in town being able to afford the taxes that you're talking about for a building, any kind of a building right now. I just don't see it, so, you know, that's why I'm here.
Okay, so can I ask two things? First of all, if you've found grant sources, can you send them to Jim or Griffin?
All I did was just went in the computer, I'm, again, I'm not savvy, you guys could walk all over me with computers and stuff. I just, just asked the exact question, is there grants available to a town to refurbish an old building for a police station? And it comes up.
Okay, alright.
Grants.
So the second thing is, the, the big problem with taking an existing building is now, post nine eleven. Is that they have to be, it's called a risk level four. So it's gotta be a hardened building. So, if we build from scratch, right, we can put in what we need for it to meet risk level four.
Right.
If we take an old building, we have to renovate it, and I don't know what that involves, to bring it up to risk level four. I mean, that could be foundation issues.
Well, this.
I mean, one of the things with the bank building is, it's a brick building.
Right, this structural engineer was aware of all that stuff, I mean, he's current on everything, if you read it, it tells you, you know.
Okay, but it doesn't say anything about risk level four, I mean, he just says it's a sound building, which I don't doubt.
Yeah.
I mean, I, frankly, I think if you put a brew pub in there, it would be awesome, but that's just my.
Just what Warren needs, another one.
So, I mean, he says that, you know, it's in good shape and everything.
It also says that.
But I, I don't see anything of, I, I would wanna see that it meets risk level four standards. Or could be easily upgraded to risk level four standard.
Well, again, I mean, I, I, I could spend millions of dollars to try and get you all the reports you want. But I guess it's kind of up to you guys to say, this is what I need and have your own structural engineer look at it.
Well, okay, I, I mean, I would think that he, he would know what that means.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this, this guy is, I mean, I didn't just pick him out of the garbage can and say, hey, I want the cheapest person to do it. I mean, this was fairly expensive to even just have this, his time to do that. But he just came out and, a- again, the town risks not doing anything, that's what's gonna happen.
I mean, what we could do is ask at the special for some engineering money, right?
Or, you're not gonna wanna hear this, but we could ask the, the public if they want to pursue the bank building. Versus the thirty million dollar building that's proposed.
Well, I would, I don't know, I would get some money first, just to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Before the town says, yeah, we want it, I mean, because what if, yeah, we want it and then like we can't use it.
I, I guess, I guess it's in my nature that we, we brought the thirty million dollar building up. And I'm, I'm not here to argue or anything, but we brought that up several months ago and zeros happened. And I foresee we. Several months ago and zeros happened and I foresee we take it to town meeting, we ask for money, then. Several me- months, several more months go by, zeros happening, meanwhile, the building that they're in is dangerous. So I just recommend that start moving, I mean, just do something, you you know, if Plan A didn't work, then go to Plan B. Play Plan B, C, D, E, whatever, we gotta do something, we just do nothing is not, nothing's not getting done.
Yeah, we're we're actively talking, we've had discussions with the chiefs, both chiefs, yeah. And um you know, what is a Plan B, what is a Plan C, so we are working on that. And we're gonna be able to present some of that um at the end of the month, so, yeah, it's, we're not just sitting around twiddling our thumbs.
Yeah, well, I guess I guess as a person in the public, I hear nothing. I hear nothing, all I hear is we can't afford a twenty or thirty million dollar.
Ah, yeah, no, no, I, yeah, I hear it too.
No, so anyhow, I just wanted you to be aware, like I said, that I think this building is adequate and it's just a drop in the bucket compared to what we're. Thinking about spending other places, that's my opinion, so, okay.
Mister Chairman, uh I I'm just some of the comments, um you know, uh I happen to run into the town clerk. Um and she had some old files that she was digging up and believe it or not. The police station and getting a building for the police station has been talked about in this town since nineteen ninety one.
About the time that.
Nineteen ninety one. And this board is probably the closest board of bringing a real project to a forefront. So think about that. We we how far we've come since nineteen ninety one to maybe potentially going to an actual vote. So. This has been talked about and talked about and talked about for years upon years. You know, there's more than just a thirty million dollar option out there. It's been stated, there's 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 opportunities to do a single, you could just do a a police station. There's an opportunity to do a fire station, there's an opportunity to do soup to nuts to a thirty million dollar uh station. So there's options out there currently, so I I I just think it's, it it would be disingenuous for us to say that there's only a thirty million dollar option out there. There's options out there currently that's more than just a thirty million dollar option, that that's the truth.
I agree with you on that, except the only one that's been talked about is thirty million dollars.
No, the the plan, the plan, the plan has 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 several different components to it, the report has several different components to it. There's more than just a thirty million dollar option out there. So, you know, and 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 there's gonna be some more options that that come about on the twenty seventh. Um that we've been meeting internally about that I mentioned in our in our report this evening and there's gonna be some more, you know. Variations that the people are gonna have to decide. We're going to give the voters an opportunity for options, just like they have at McDonald's. There's a Big Mac, number one, number two, number three, what do you wanna spend? And that's what you're gonna have put in front of you. We we with the selectmen have made an opportunity to encourage the public to submit public comments. To submit, you know, questions, concerns, I haven't received one. I got one tonight, but but we're we're waiting on on the public, the public's gotta be engaged too. Um you know, we're tr- trying to give as much information as we can to the public. Um to to make a a conscientious decision and we're not saying to decide whatever way you wanna decide, but it's your decision. And we're trying to give them as much information as possible, so you know, I this board has gotten so close to the finish line right now. And and really, the the report that was done cost the taxpayers zero because it was all done by ARPA and grants. So all of this work that we've done so far hasn't really cost the town anything. But it it is, it has come to answer a lot of questions and I think it's to promote dialogue and discussion. Um and I think we're, you know, there's there's, we're getting there, I think that there's, there's gonna be some more um. Um information passed out on the twenty seventh that's gonna be helpful uh to the residents to to make a a potentially informed decision at some point.
And there are people who support the whole shebang, I have talked to people who said. Whatever, let's just do the whole thing, we need fire, we need police, let's just do it. So it runs the spectrum from do not raise my taxes at all to let's just get it done because every year it gets more expensive. So you gotta like try and navigate this way through it, you know.
Steve Duffy is saying that they're trying to attract people to Warren, could you raise those taxes to where that would be?
Don't worry about the people in town who don't afford to live here, they don't mind outsiders coming in, it's just not gonna happen, we'll never sell new houses, we'll never sell what we have.
Although. There there is a pretty factor of a shiny new building, whether it's a police or a complex.
Yeah.
So that does make a difference to know that when you move there, you have a great fire department, you know, a great police department. So again, I think what we wanna do, um we're we're almost advisors up here. We're trying to figure out what we can advise the people on and then we're gonna give options. And we're gonna say, you can vote on this, this, this and this, what do you wanna do?
I I'm not trying to be argumentative, please don't get that right.
No, this is the discussion.
Is is it is like Jim just you just said, it hasn't cost the town anything, it really has because. You had a town janitor fall through the stairs at the police station that we currently have. And I'm sure the town paid something for that, I would think, I don't know, but I mean, it it and I'm just saying, the building's unsafe. We've all known that since nineteen ninety one, we've known the building's unsafe, what are we gonna do, we're gonna wait till somebody really gets hurt there. And then we're gonna say, yeah, we should have done that, but we didn't.
Mister Chairman, can I just say for the record, I I I, Mister Town, I can assure you that we are looking at other options, those those conversations are being had. I just wanna clarify again for everybody here, okay, um everybody keeps saying the thirty million dollar building, okay, that was. The top line, it wasn't thirty, it was twenty eight, I understand that's still an expense, but that was one of three choices. So everyone keeps saying that top number over and over again, that was one of three choices, that was a project that came off a grant that we were, we needed to do to get to the next step of it. So we understand certainly that there are other things that we need to look at and we are currently doing so, but what people seem to be not grasping. Is the difference between municipal building and private buildings, okay, and there's a huge difference there and the problem is, is that. You know, people need to understand that we can't just ask, you know, a a local business to build us something and then we move into it. We have to follow procurement laws, we have to follow prevailing age, we have to do all of those things and if we don't do it. We could not get a certificate to occupy the building, so we have to, I'm not saying we can't look at the best option. But the problem is, we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot right off the bat because if we do something that that doesn't fix the problems we have. If we if we try to move into a building that isn't rated the right way. We're gonna end up costing the town a fortune in terms of liability and insurance and everything like that, so please just understand, it's not as simple. To for a private entity to build a building as it is for a municipality to build a building and we have to just be cognizant of that.
Yeah, let me just tell you that as a private, I'm not interested in fixing the building up any longer, I'm interested in selling it.
Oh, no, I under- I'm I'm not talking about your building in particular, I'm just saying in general terms, just people need to understand that, you know, I, cause I've heard the spectrum, as we say, the spectrum. I've had people come in and say, you know, we don't need this, but we need this, we'd like to do this, I've had people say we should build the whole thing, it's been all over the place. And I've had those conversations with many people, but what I've always tried to stress, no matter who I talk to, is right or wrong. And I believe me, I don't agree with a lot of it, believe me, it's a lot of red tape and it's unfortunate that these towns are put into the situation they are, but. The fact of the matter is, we skirt the law, we end up in a huge problem with the office of inspector general or the attorney general. We could be paying tremendous fines and stuff, so we gotta be really careful and we can't just say that we're just gonna ignore. We can't, we're not gonna be told what to do, this is how we're gonna do it, okay, that will work to only a certain extent. And I just want people to understand that that is what we're up against when trying to make the best decision for the town and what to do to move forward for both departments. Or just one for now, I mean, that I just need people to know that's the difference between private and municipal, huge difference.
Didn't didn't we do that with this building? I mean, we continue to dump a s- a serious amount of money into this building. It probably never was worth dumping the money that.
I don't disagree with you, I I I I'm not gonna stay here and say that.
Yeah, but we still are putting a lot of money into this building.
Oh, I I and I again, Jim, I I all for looking at any and all options, all I'm saying is that, you know, whether it's your bu- uh your building that. You know, you have right now or another building and someone presents it, the reality is, is that the second the occupancy of that building changes. It's no longer a commercial business, it's no longer a bank, it's no longer a convenience store, whatever it is, if it's now considered for a municipal police department. It changes the rules drastically and that's all I'm trying to, that's I just trying to be upfront and honest as to the hurdles we're gonna face. Once you change the occupancy of that building, cause if you look at the 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 building codes first of all and foremost, and then certainly fire codes. You're looking at a huge change to that occupancy of that location and that changes the game completely.
That's why I would suggest going to the citizens and saying, okay, the bank is maybe a possible building, let's get a study done. What would it take to bring it up to snuff, is it doable?
But let's not use the same ones that's designing the new building, cause that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be apples for apples. Of course, they would wanna sell you the new building, I mean, you'd have to have an independent.
Yeah, but they're not making money on selling us the building, I mean, they're just.
Well, they would, they, when when the building's being built, they're gonna be there, right, they're gonna get fees out of it.
All they did was the present, the the initial design proposal.
Yeah, they're not, they don't build the building, they just. They don't have any, they're simply a design firm that 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 does an architectural layout of a building, that's, that's all that is, that's what the grant grant captured. And again, that's what we've been trying to explain to people that we're well away from that conversation yet, they didn't even ask us, I mean. People are saying, well, the building is crazy, look at it looks like, we weren't even asked, the police and fire chiefs weren't even asked to come up with a conceptual design for this. We weren't asked about materials, we weren't asked about what it would look like, none of those conversations were had, so. Just to clarify, yeah, just to clarify, cause I've heard that too, is that why would you guys design it like this, it looks like a fortress, we had nothing to do with that. Not a single conversation in the background about.
Here's what it might look like, here's what the layout might be.
What we're building other ones that look, you know, for similar things, here's what we think for square footage and the current thing, here's what you guys have to deal with with an FPA. And the police have to deal with 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 posts and everything, all those requirements, so like, I just, again, for clarification and I'm glad you brought this up because. I've had these conversations many times with people in the last few months and this is exactly what I tell them and, you know, they just think that we did it, but. All of those were conceptual things done by that firm, not us.
Yeah, it which which isn't fair because they're telling you what you need and I talked with the police chief and. His office was very, very large, he didn't, he said, I don't need that, well, if you didn't need it, you know, I mean, they should have asked him, said, well, what size office do you need? I I can't imagine there being a requirement, you have to have so many square feet per office.
No, but you know, again, these these folks, they do this based on, you know, different builds that they've done around. Different sized communities and stuff and what modern day, you know, facilities look like. We, none of us, I mean, we've said this many times, none of us are looking for Taj Mahal, we're just looking for places to operate, that fit our trucks. That fit our apparatus, that is safe for personnel and I don't disagree with it at all, that, we need to do something. And if it and if it means look at a building like the bank or something, I'm all for every one of those options, I really am. I don't want anyone to think that we're just saying, no, we don't even hear that, we just want this option, that's not the case whatsoever, we just have to keep in mind of what the requirements.
I I just wanna make sure that everybody's looking out for the taxpayers' best interest also. Because someone like, and and I look out for businesses, someone like Warren Pumps. Who's pro- I don't know how, I mean, they seem to be doing very well, but given the, give the increase that you're possibly gonna give to the regular residents. Give that increase to them, that could, that could.
And 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 I and I understand all that and that's why we're why we're having these conversations in the background and and I assure you we are, but. You know, the reality is, is that I don't think we're at any point where we can say, well, we can't do a thirty, we can't do a twenty, we can't even do a ten, like, we need, we're not there yet. We need to look at truly what the best options are to try to incorporate at least some fix for both departments so that we're not, you know, because the reality is. Is that if we, my fear, and I said this at the last meeting, is that you approach the taxpayers for a a decent upgrade. For a police department and a brand new police department, I I don't even think you're gonna get it anywhere close to ten million dollars, even the study said fourteen or something like that. So you're talking a ballpark for one building as it is, so and that's, you know, and we're not even at that stage yet, but the reality is. I don't think there's a single taxpayer in this town, you know, myself included, I have family here and a child and the school and the school system and everything and I pay taxes just like everybody else. But no one's gonna say, give me a tax increase at this rate and then ten years later do it again, you know what I mean? So it really needs to have us really focus, sharpen our pencils and look for an option that 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 both departments can look for. Present a good presentation to the taxpayer, explain why this is the best option going forward and go from there, let the chips fall where they may at the end of the.
So my takeout of this whole conversation is that we picked the wrong, we wasted a grant. We hired a company to design a building that you guys don't want.
No, 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 that's not, no, no, I don't, I wouldn't put it in those terms, what we what we did was we we got a grant that encompassed. Building a modern day public safety complex for police and fire, you know, in the locations that we can. And unfortunately, a couple of locations are, would require us to, you know, ideally, we don't wanna have to take land, we don't wanna have, not take land, but purchase land. In order to, you know, to build and everything, so, you know, we have a viable spot where the highway garage is that hopefully we could fit something, but it's gonna be very tight. But no, I don't think we wasted the money, I think we got a starting point to do this and again, the bigger portion was to have a feasibility study done. So that if there were monies available that came from the state, came from the feds, we could step in the front of the line and say, look, we got a plan, this is what it is. Because it's a big difference if they're gonna fork over fifteen million dollars for a project or not, so this is again, it's something we had to do. It's a formality that many other towns and communities have done around us, now we gotta sharpen our pencils and look at those other options and I'm all for that. I don't want anyone to think anything otherwise than that, but you know, but it is gonna cause us to be creative, but I I think that, you know. We can figure out something to to do it, but I think that, I think generally speaking, as you've said in the meetings, that the need is there. I think everyone knows what the town, what the needs are, you know, but you know, getting there is is, we're gonna have to do it together, no doubt.
I think that the study gave us a starting point to say, okay, here's, here's what maybe could be. And it's too much, okay, so let's pull out this, let's reduce this, let's pull out this thing, get rid of these two bays, you know, and then we can bring it down, so.
And that's, that's what we're currently doing to see what a truly, to our needs at this point, reducing it to a brand new facility, safety complex. What's it gonna cost, what is it gonna do, what can we live without, what can we cut down so we can present it at that meeting and here's the other options as well.
And and I'll say this, Tecton didn't do this in a vacuum, what they did was they came, um police, uh fire in the town, right? And they looked at what types of things we do and we need and they took that information and built the buildings. So they said, okay, you do this, this and this, here's how this looks in twenty twenty five. Right, so that's where you get the size of a police chief's office or the size of a conference room or the fact that you have. Uh day beds and rooms for the uh fire department, you know, things like that, eight bays normally or six bays, you know.
Have have you, have you thought about doing it a little backwards and saying, we're gonna raise everybody's taxes X amount? The most we can afford is X amount and make it, design a building to afford that that fits within that budget. Whether it be five million, two million, ten million, whatever it may be, but just say we got ten mil.
Cause everybody has a different view on, like I said, there's pe- I've talked to people who said, just do it. I and one person said, I don't care how much it costs.
Yeah, well, that's.
So I can take her info or I can take somebody else's who says, don't raise my taxes at all and where do I start there?
I I just, I I guess as as a resident, I don't, I all I've, there's been no talk about anything else going on. So maybe maybe that's what you need to do is bring it up a little bit, saying we're trying to do this, that and everything else. Because I'm not informed, I'm I'm still thinking you guys are going for the other building, which is not gonna pass, I can assure you. I don't care how many people have told you, there's gonna be a lot more that are gonna say no than are gonna say yes.
Yeah, let me just, have you been to the other two meetings?
I, no.
Okay, you gotta come, so.
I did go to one of them, I think I did, yeah, it, but.
You weren't there on the first, cause the first meeting, there was like five people.
I'm not interested in even going to a meeting for two- for twenty eight or twenty six thousand or a million dollars, I'm just not, I just.
I know, but at your, at those meetings, your input is what we're looking for, so if you don't go, then your input is zero.
I I give you my input right now, I'm telling you that we need something and we we and we, we don't wanna wait another ten years, we wanna do it now.
Yeah.
But it needs to be something that, it's gonna be talked up and if there's options, then you should start putting those options out there, let everybody know what they are.
We definitely are working on it, but I think people need to go into this thing understanding that there has to be some sort of reasonable number, whatever in their mind, I mean, we have to keep in mind. I mean, you look at Ware Station, hit their fire station, they built that, I don't know, seven years ago now, eight years ago, it was seven million dollars then. By just the fire station, you look at Southbridge's fire station, it's twenty eight million dollars, you know, you, I mean, these are re- real prices unfortunately. And so if someone is under the false impression that we're gonna spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars and fix this problem, I I don't know what to tell them, you know what I mean? So all I'm saying is that we do have to understand that at the end of the day, regardless of what we do, it's gonna cost some money, it is gonna have to. I mean, there's just, that's just the way it is, but we're here, you know, I can, I can't, Jerry's not here tonight unfortunately, but I um. But we're here, you know, I can, I can't, Jerry's not here tonight unfortunately, but I, um, he's out on medical leave at the moment, but, um, I can, I'm sure I can speak for him when I say that our doors are always open. You know that, how many times have we talked and you've come in over the years, and that goes for everybody. If you wanna come in and talk, I'm open anytime. Come on in, talk, we'll sit down, any of these concerns. But yeah, officially, this is the first piece of paperwork, I think, that's been presented, you know, since those meetings have come out. I've had those, some conversations, but, you know, I assure you, no one is here to pull the wool over the eye of the taxpayers. We're doing the best we can with what we got.
And that wasn't my intention.
No, no, and I'm not saying it was, I'm just saying.
I've heard no other options. As a person, I've not heard anybody talking. I heard the, the twenty-eight or thirty million, and I just gave you option B, because I didn't hear an option B anywhere.
Okay.
Somebody's got an option B, that's better than that.
That's fair enough, let's do it. You're right, and this, this is just, I'm speaking in general terms, nothing to do with that. I'm just saying, this is what the stuff we are looking at in the background.
I'm done, I'm going home, I gotta repair it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Come to the twenty-seventh, the meeting on the twenty-seventh. All right.
Just a quick comment on the range of support. I can guarantee you, for every person you're hearing, they don't care what it costs, you're gonna have three people who do. So that, that's, that's not the right way to look at it, that, right, because you can find five people that are supporting it. I, as soon as you find five, I'll find fifteen, so.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind.
Yeah.
That's, that's not really the issue. The issue is, so say you can cut it down to, I'm just gonna make up some numbers, fifteen million, and the town declines it, then what will the town do?
It's a good question. We're trying to work on actually getting something passed, I guess.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
And so the calculus is, kinda what Mr. Fountain alluded to at the end there, was, is there a way to get a sense for what the town will support? And I think as soon as you go into double digit, ten million or more, that, they're not gonna, they're not gonna care about any other arguments about how much it's needed, and, uh, again, none of this is personal, we all know that, right? It's increased call volumes and, 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 and staff safety and all that, which are great points to bring up, and they're needed to be considered. But that, that's just gonna go, they're, they're, they're just gonna lose that. As soon as they hear more than ten million.
The number, they're, they're.
And so, so what I'm seeing here, so my second point is simply, it, the second paragraph, you've got an engineer, at least this engineer, who, I don't know, but apparently, he's got a professional certification here, and he says he's reviewed the international building code, which is, governs all this. I, excuse me, I forget the level four, I forget the tur.
Risk level four.
Risk level four. Uh, if he's reviewed the codes and he says it would be feasible to renovate and bring the building into conformance with the indicated code, I'm presuming he knows that that means it's gotta be risk level four.
I guess I would like, would have liked to, you know what, can I call him?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna call him.
And, and.
Because I would've liked to see that, this means risk level four, you know?
I, great, that's, that's what we do, we look into it. All I'm saying is, is that if, if this is true, and we just have to refurbish a building that is refurbishable, that would require a study. It'd require more than this, obviously, but this is encouraging that, is, is this maybe a possibility? And so can it become considered as one of these options? And, and, and you may not know that until you get the study done. And, and, to be honest, it would be imprudent to consider it as a viable option until you get that study done. But this meeting on the twenty-seventh is gonna be dramatically important.
Yeah.
And the, I, I, I would just give the input. The first two meetings were perceived by the people who bothered to attend, by and large, as simply commercials for one of the three conceptual designs.
Yeah, yeah.
And if that's, if that's what's gonna happen on the twenty-seventh.
Nope.
You will not make progress.
Yeah.
You will not. It, everyone will leave completely, e- even more frustrated than after the second one.
I, no.
But, so I, I just wanted to make those comments, and we'll, we'll have more, it's, it, you know, it's late, and we can talk about it on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, so just to speak on, on Ray's, he's, he's right. Um, but again, people have to understand what these three meetings were for. And these were presentations of the feasibility study that was done off a grant, nothing more. Okay, so only in the last meeting has they, we, people screaming about option B, option C, and rightfully so. But let's not lose track of what these three meetings were intended to do, which was to promote the free usability study, well, not promote, but to present the feasibility study and explain it, and give people an opportunity to attend one of these three meetings. It wasn't supposed to be. Yes, and it voiced their concerns. This was not supposed to be, we had one meeting, oh, then you're gonna come up with this plan, and that changes the whole scope of it. This was simply three meetings to explain the feasibility study. And I just, I'm just trying to make sure we don't lose track of that, because, I mean, I don't think by the twenty-seventh, I'm gonna come in with architectural plans with four other options in a week and a half. I mean, the reality is the conversations are being had. We hear it, we understand what people are asking us to do. It's probably not gonna be done by the twenty-seventh, and we can get more input, and we'll take that back and look at it. But no one's coming with architectural plans on the twenty-seventh for a brand new project that we just came up with. I, that's, that's not what this was intended for. And that's not, and I, and I mean, with the most respect for everyone in the room, I just try to explain what the, the original scope of this mission was.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may too, this was to determine what the price is going to potentially be, and what the impact it would have on the taxpayers. So in order to get that price, Tecton architects had to come out and, and like Chairman said, had to do an assessment. They sat down with the fire chief, they sat down with the police chief, they toured their facilities, they went over their equipment, they went over their space, they did an analysis, they took measurements, they said, what is your growth for the next ten years, thirty years out? They wanted to look at that. They put all of this together, and then they designed a floor plan for, for what a potential, um, space would look like, with, based on their needs. This is not something that Tecton said, oh, I'm gonna give you a thirty million dollar building to go sell to your town. This is based on the department's needs, and their needs for, for out, spanning out thirty years. So they did that assessment, they came up with floor plans, and then they gave some architectural renderings of what potentially a building would look like, potentially what a building would look like.
Okay, Jim, but the thing is, you just said, they came out and they addressed their needs. That, by his own admission, he said, we never had any input.
No, no, I said, we never had an input on design of the building and stuff. We had input certainly on bays and, and square footage and stuff like that, but a lot of that came from, again, you know, what codes and standards are requiring of today, and where we have to wash our stuff.
They're not gonna tell us what type of shingles. Or glass.
Right.
Or, 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 or siding, or brick.
Right.
Their, their role is to only tell us what their needs are inside the building.
Right.
And then the board will determine whether or not, you know, what level of costs are, are gonna, are we gonna have a brick building? Are we, you know, what costs, and based on, on their analysis.
I understand all that stuff, but like I say, I, I was in a meeting with, with the police chief, and he was amazed at the size of room they had for his office. He just said, I don't need, I don't need that, I don't need it. So I'm saying, maybe they should've had a lot more input. They should've said, we can get by with a hundred square foot office, or, or a thousand, whatever it may be, I'm just using those as numbers. But it didn't sound like they had that. So these guys come up with a, a twenty-eight or thirty million dollar building, when they probably could've come in with half that. And the, and the problem is now is, it does leave a bad taste in the town's residents' mouth, when all of a sudden this big number comes out. You know, can they reduce it? Maybe, I would, I would hope, but I'm just saying, they should have a lot more input than what they had. If in fact, they didn't have, I mean, if they didn't get a determination, if the chief doesn't know what size office he had, that ain't right.
That's, that's all, he had this conversation, I, I let the chiefs have, have free rein, tell me what your needs are.
Yeah.
And, and, and we went right to Tecton and said, Tecton, put, put, put the plans together, work with the two chiefs, tell me what their needs are. So this is what they came back with their input.
And, and again, I can't speak for, for Jerry on that. I, I'm specifically talking about the construction itself of the building. We did not have input on that. There are other areas that required, you have to understand in certain locations too, for handicap access, uh, accessibility, topography of the land. We couldn't do a one-story building. We had to do a two-story building, which then brought into effect elevators and all of that stuff. So there's a lot of factors that people, you know, that, that don't have any, you know, no, uh, experience looking into any of these things, you wouldn't think about, you know? We don't have a, a room for a one-story building safety complex on Route nineteen. You just don't, so you have to build up. So all of those things changed the price, they changed the accessibility of it, they changed the occupancy of it. So that's where you unfortunately see the numbers go up. Was I hoping the numbers would come in a lot lower than that? Yeah, absolutely. I don't think anyone is, would, you know, was hoping that we, I would've loved to say, oh yeah, we can get the whole thing for fifteen million, you know? But we're, we're here now, and, you know, the reality is, is that we're more than willing to work with the town and anyone else with any ideas to look at what truly is the best option. I just wanna make sure people understand and, and compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges at the end of the day.
Are those people gonna be at that meeting on the twenty-seven?
Who's that? The Tecton? Oh, yeah, they're gonna be presenting.
Because I would like to know, if I go, again, I'm not gonna go if I waste, if I feel like I'm wasting my time. But I would like to go and say, if the chief says he can end up with a closet for an office, is that allowed? And if he said, no, there's a certain requirement, you know, per law that they have to have some.
That's not a requirement, yeah.
Well, okay, that, but I'm just trying to say, that building could be reduced probably a lot in size if these guys have some input. That's my opinion. More input, I just, and again, I'm not, I'm not here argumenting, I'm just trying to say, if we gotta cut the cost, and we should really cut the cost to what they can use, it still leaves room for expansion. I mean, you know, for later years, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think he, he put out the number, it's a thousand dollars a square foot for, 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 uh, for construction. So anything that can be cut, you know, is, is, you're saving a thousand dollars a square foot. But, you know, with the same token, that this building is going to last thirty, fifty years, don't be a penny wise and a pound foolish, because, you know, ten years from now, you, you don't wanna.
Outgrow it.
You don't wanna be outgrown and say, oh, by the way, you know, I need more space, or I need this, I need that, because the chief is right.
And that's, that's all I'm trying to say, that's all I'm trying to bring to the conversation. And the reality is, we're talking, they're saying thirty to fifty years, the reality is our stations are seventy-five years old now.
Right.
So, so my point is, is, is exactly that, is that we know that it's not gonna be fifty years. We know it's gonna be seventy-five years or more before, even if we built it tomorrow, before we're gonna redress it again. So we just gotta be careful how we do it, is all I'm saying. That's all I'm trying to relate.
Just be willing to consider when the town doesn't support whatever gets put before them, maybe the bank building could be, and again, not that I'm advocating for the bank building per se, but it's probably the only real option that I can think of in town.
Probably, yeah.
If, if that could be refurbished for four hundred dollars a square foot, versus a thousand or nine, the figure I was going off was nine hundred, but might as well be a thousand. It's, it's just, that's all I'm saying. Is that, is that I, because the worst, to me, the worst outcome is that the town doesn't support whatever gets put before it. That's the worst outcome. It would be worse than if the town did go for a twenty-five million dollar project.
Yeah, to do nothing.
And that's my concern. And so, and, and I, I'm convinced that as soon as you go over ten or twelve million dollars, start looking for those people who say, I don't care what it costs, cause you're gonna need a lot of them.
Yeah.
There'll be, like I said, three times as many people who say, well, I, with, with, I, I, and I'm not advocating for this when I say it, but this is the mentality that's gonna need to be out there. No one's gonna care about thirty years from now. No one's gonna care about ten years from now. They're gonna care about next year when the taxes go up. And, and that, and that has to be the primary factor, not the only factor by, by long shot. We do need to, if, if we are gonna do something, it's gotta be appropriate, it's gotta be code, it's gotta be, you know, usable. But it, it has to be the, the most fundamental aspect is, I, I'd really encourage you guys, hopefully there'll be a big turnout, and I would, I would even say something like this. I'd say, just an informal poll, who would support a twenty million dollar project? Show of hands. Who would support, and go, who would support a five million dollar project? And, well, here's the thing, if every hand doesn't go up, if, look, let's just, look, you gotta have a floor. This, you can't do even option D for less than probably, I, I don't know, cause I'm not a builder. But let's just say five million, let, four million, five million. So give them, give, give them three options. Who would support a six million dollar project? Who would support a twelve million dollar, a twelve million dollar project? Who would support an eighteen million dollar project? And do a show of hands. It's informal, but at least it gives you some sense.
It's not a bad idea. Right, if no one stands for even six million dollars.
I'll put ten dollars on the ratios, what you'll see.
Yeah, yeah.
If you wanna take me up on that, so.
Yeah, no one's gonna worry about thirty years from now, because with that increase in their taxes, half those people won't survive here for the next thirty years. You know what I mean? We have a lot of elderly people. When I own the oil business, I see people, they can just barely either pay for their oil, or pay for their food. They couldn't pay for both. They, I mean, we do, we have a lot of older residents, and, and they couldn't afford that kind of taxes, so their houses are gonna go for sale. Or they're gonna lose them, or whatever's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, but, you know, we worry about thirty years on the road. We better worry about tomorrow, because these people can't stay.
And I assure you, that's not the goal. That's not the goal.
No, and I know that.
To move anybody out of here.
And I know that, I'm just saying.
That's not what we want. All I was saying with the thirty years was that we, we know that when we say fifty years it's gonna last, we know it's gonna be a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
Historically, that's the truth. The truth is in this town, and in many communities, that's the truth. And I just, just throwing it out there that we have to understand that, that we know that's not gonna be replaced in thirty years. We get that.
I, I, I agree with, I, I agree that you do a great job for the town. I, I think the chief, uh, police chief does a great job for the town, but it just seems like we're not doing, we should start doing something, but we just can't do everything. That's, you know, I mean, if we don't do something pretty quick, nothing's gonna get done again, any of them.
I assure you, we are working on it, Jim, and I appreciate your comments tonight. Thank you, and Ray.
Last comment from Derek.
I, I just wanna add that we've been through this for more than three years, looking at buildings, looking at possibilities, doing our homework. Um, open to the public, and, you know, it's been a lot of work. The second thing I wanna say is, you know, I kinda like, like the idea of asking on the floor who will support how much. But do we know how much is X amount of numbers, how much it will cost X amount a month? That will be the reality, because, you know, if I don't like five, but maybe I like six, or I don't like six, I like seven or four. So it's very hard.
I'll be happy to supply those numbers.
Excellent.
Okay.
That, that, that's what we want, people to get on, hands on, and help us, because we've been doing this for more than three years, and we've been going through all of this. Uh, the board has a former architect who have seen a lot of this stuff going on. I, 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 I know about codes of, codes, uh, building codes and structural, I know what that means. And, you know, the architects did a wonderful job. They spent many hours interviewing everybody at the, uh, the police and the fire station. How many offices do we need, how many people, how many this, to come up with a possible option, which would be the ideal? Yes, it's way too expensive, but what's not expensive today? So that's the only comment I wanna, you know, two comments I wanna say before finishing this up.
All right. All right, so moving on, Joe. Okay, make it quick.
Joe Conrad, resident. Charlie Kirk would be proud tonight. This is what he was all for. It's unfortunate that his voice was silenced. But even in this room, we've proved that the discourse between one person and another can get to a point where, all right, we'll have a standing vote. Who wants to pay this much? Who wants to pay that much? He would be proud of us. Thank you.
Okay, our next meeting, uh, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, it's six PM. And what is the final town common meeting? That's just the regular meeting, right?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have one, um, virtual.
Four PM, same day. And the, the twenty-fifth is also a poll hearing.
No, that was the other day.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I'd like to read a statement, I'm not gonna take, cause it's late, I'm not gonna take any questions or comments after it, and then we can close, okay? Um, the board acknowledges violation of the social media policy by a member that occurred on Facebook a couple of months ago. The matter has been addressed internally, and we are confident that it's been fully resolved. Town employees should always be mindful of how they present themselves to the public online and otherwise. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Which motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Vellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye, we are adjourned, good night, everyone.